I call to order this October 24th, 2024, meeting of the Albemarle County School Board. For the first time in a long time, we don't have any motions right now. So we will start with the roll call, starting with Josiah Black.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Josiah Black, School Division Council.
Margaret Lee, Western Albemarle High School.
Allison Spillman, at-large representative.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District Representative.
Rebecca Berlin, Whitehall Representative.
Judy Lee, Ryvanna District.
Kate Acuff, Jack Jewett District.
Graham Page, Miller District.
Chuck Pace, Rye District.
Matthew Haas, Superintendent.
Daphne Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Chandra Hayes, Assistant Superintendent.
Christine Thompson, Clerk of the Board.
Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Pat Malaflo, Assistant Superintendent.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Next, we'll stand for the Federal Agents.
The Federal Agents to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation in the ground and visible in the future.
And next, we will observe a moment of silence. Thank you. That brings us to 2.0, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Berlin, seconded by Ms. Spillman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? All right. Agenda is approved. Next, we have 3.0, approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Spillman, seconded by Mr. Page and Dr. Berlin. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? All right. Consent agenda is approved. Next, we have 5.0 announcements. We have our new student representative to the school board, Margaret Lee from Western Albemarle.
Hello, everyone. My name is Margaret Lee, and I am a senior attending Western Albemarle High School. I'm thrilled to be representing my peers this year. Throughout high school, I have expressed passion towards fighting for social justice and equity, such as being the president of the Young Asian American and Pacific Islanders of Charlottesville Chapter at WAS, a YAWPIC representative for the Student Senate, a member of the WAS Task Force Against Discrimination, and aiding and co-founding the Courageous Conversations Advisory Lessons at Henley Middle School, as well as advising their anti-racism policy for over 1,600 peers. My commitment towards promoting a more equitable environment for my peers and uplifting marginalized student voices will continue to grow during my time as a student representative. In addition to social justice, I hope to advocate for better access to health education for students through vaping and anti-drug awareness and mental health advocacy, as well as considering the perspectives and voices of my peers in order to come up with a solution that benefits everyone. In a society where hate, discrimination, and inequities run rampant, I hope to bring forward an array of perspectives from students whose voices are often silenced, using my own as a catalyst for positive change. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Margaret, and welcome. Next, we have school board and superintendent business. Do we have any business?
Thank you, Ms. Lee. And also, I want to welcome Margaret to the board. So just three things. First, I did want to share that I did a school visit on Monday over at Mountain View Elementary School, and I was joined by Ellen Osborne, and it was a really wonderful visit. It is, as you know, the largest elementary school that we have. And when we visited, I was really super impressed with the way the school looked from the outside all the way up. There's a lot of great signage that the school pioneered for the school system to welcome students and families in other languages. I want to give a shout out to building services. The interior of the building, it was clutter-free. There was plenty of space and a very calm and businesslike atmosphere. We got to enjoy some really wonderful classrooms. In particular, there's, Mountain View has also pioneered bringing in teachers on visa so that they could have teachers from other countries joining their ranks, especially teachers that speak languages that are the predominant languages at Mountain View. And so I got to meet those teachers. It's quite a journey for those teachers to be able to join us and a lot of work through the HR department. So I want to congratulate them as well. We had a particularly good time in Mr. Grasso's fifth grade music class. The students were singing together the Rainbow Connection, and he was playing guitar. And they transitioned to an interactive assignment on seesaw. They were playing Guantanamo on something, on an application that was called Beatbox. And the students were assigned to go in and work in the beatbox, which shows all the notes for the song. And he asked them to reproduce the notes using different sounds that were available to them. So they were really making their own composition, and they would submit that through that program. The thing I really enjoyed was it reminded me the quality of our technology department because the students just opened up their laptops that they had sitting on the side. They brought them to class, just opened them right up. They were able to go right to the application with single sign-on and just begin working, where, you know, five years, 10 years ago, it would take forever just to get that off the ground. So I'm so proud of the work of our technology department, and I really appreciate the teachers embracing our technologies. We also wrapped things up in Katie Fife's second grade class, where students were actively reviewing vowel sounds and blends through HMH into reading with their structured literacy work. And one thing that really impressed me about Ms. Fife was her ability to make sure all the students were on the rug, working together, and they were calling out words together, but she made sure she heard every student. And there was a couple of students that were kind of quiet, but she actually leaned very close to them to make sure and check for understanding. So it wasn't just the whole group got it, so now I'm moving on. Just, we really want to celebrate Mountain View and also as an example of all of our schools. I'm sure if I visited any school on Monday, we would have seen the same quality of work going on, and I'm really proud of it. I also want, speaking of that, I want to celebrate six of our schools in particular who were named by the Virginia Department of Education as exemplar schools. They received the prestigious Highest Achievement Award for their work for 2024-25. If you recall, last spring, we had like a later notification because the VDOE kind of picked this up and started doing it in the spring, and we had three schools. And this time, we had six out of the total of 92 schools. And the only school system that had more than us was Virginia Beach, which has about 80,000 students. So they had one more school than we did, and we had six, which is about a quarter of our schools. Broadus Wood Elementary School, Community Lab School, Hollymead Elementary School, Ivy Elementary School, Stony Point Elementary School, and Virginia Murray Elementary School. And this time, Community Lab was the only school with a graduating class in Virginia to have that honor. And it's based on all the accreditation areas, student group performance. You can't have more than a 5% difference between enrollment groups in your school on achievement. So there's, you can't just have an overall pass rate. And for the high schools, there's the Graduation and Completion Index and their dropout rate. And chronic absenteeism is a factor. And finally, the highlight of the night is we have some awards to give out to our board members. These are the VSBA Academy Awards, and Josh is going to help me do the honors. I would like to recognize some of our board members who are receiving certificates this evening. The VSBA honors board members for their dedication and hard work in enhancing their governance skills through VSBA meetings, conferences, board development, training, and active participation in the association. VSBA members earn credits toward Academy Awards based on their involvement throughout the year. There are five levels of awards with certificates and pins awarded for particular levels. The VSBA Academy Awards are presented annually to school board members who meet the established criteria. So this year, VSBA recognizes our Chair, Judy Lee, with an Award of Achievement. That's the bronze pin for 24 credits.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Josh.
All right. So Ellen Osborne, our Scottsville representative, wins the Award of Excellence, is the silver pin for 48 credits in two years. Dr. Kate Acuff, our representative for the Jack Jewett District, with an Award of Excellence, which is also the silver pin for 48 credits in two years. And our Samuel, our Samuel Miller District Representative, Mr. Graham Page, won the Award of Honor, which is the gold pin for 66 credits. Thank you very much, Chair Lee. I appreciate the time that you gave me.
Thank you very much. Do any of our board members have any business for this time?
I would like to tag on to something Dr. Haas just mentioned, and that's about the HR department working with the visa program. I'm very glad that we're doing that. I know it's not an easy lift, and I really hope that we continue that.
I have just a brief thing. I went yesterday for a while to the bus tailgate meeting of our, to recognize our bus drivers in the county. I spoke with two drivers that have just been with, two new drivers as well as a veteran driver. And I heard from William Schiflett that I think we have nine drivers in training. So we've been able to unstack some of the routes, and I think we're making progress.
Right now, they have 22 net drivers from July of last summer. So they have net hired 22 drivers. Their goal is 30, so they're well on their way. But thank you for attending that, Dr. Acuff.
It was a treat.
I was out today, and I sent you all pictures, so you should have it. But anyways, I went to Whitt Brook, who was working very hard at letters training today. And they were going to have a great lunch from Qdoba. That's when I unfortunately had to leave, and so I missed that. I went to Agner and Albemarle, Albemarle Science Teachers especially. I was, I went, hung out with them for the afternoon. They did a lot of really cool training today.
Okay, and Chair Lee, I'd like to report that on yesterday, Dr. Casa and I attended mix-up day at Scottsville Elementary School. The teachers, well, and some of the kids too, dressed in like mixed-up costumes, like socks that didn't match or something else that didn't match. But the most important thing was that pre-K through fifth grade, they all ate lunch with different age groups. And so it might have been some pre-K in with fifth graders at the same lunch period. And each volunteers, including Dr. Casa and I, had a chance to sort of sit at a table with about five or six students. There were some icebreaker questions to sort of get the conversation started. I found out that the pre-K, it was pretty hard to keep the pre-K in line with those icebreaker questions, right? They tended to sort of veer off quite often on those questions. But it was really an enlightening experience, and I really enjoyed being there.
Did your socks match?
No, no. I didn't really go do that. You know, I didn't think about it until I got there, so.
Next year. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have 6.0, public comment, and Ellen Osborne will be doing public comment tonight.
Yes. We welcome public input at our school board meetings. To sign up to speak during the public comment period, you can do so in several ways. Online, sign up is available from 9:00 on the Monday of the meeting week until 2:00 p.m. on that day, on meeting day. By phone, call the school board clerk's office at 434-972-4055 to sign up until 2:00 p.m. on the meeting day. Or in person, sign up at the meeting that's available from 6:00 p.m. until the public comment period starts. That's for in-person meetings only. Please note, the public comment is not received at special board meetings unless specified on the agenda. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, but the chair, with the board consent, may reduce this to two minutes should there be 14 or more speakers. The maximum number of people or groups that may speak at a meeting is 20. In the event there are more than 20 people or groups who wish to speak at a particular meeting, each speaker will be assigned a number, and numbers will be drawn to determine which people or groups will have the opportunity to speak. Those who do not have the opportunity to speak at a particular meeting may sign up to speak at a subsequent meeting and/or may submit written comments for the school board's consideration. Speakers should state your name, address, or voting district. Address comments to the school board. Limit comments to school board governance or school division operations. Provide written statements and supporting material to the clerk. School board will use a timer to track each speaker's time. Speakers are asked to wrap up their comments by the end of the three-minute mark. To maintain respect, please refrain from clapping or other audible forms of support. You may raise your hand instead, and debate with the school board is not allowed in this situation. The projection system is for staff presentations only. Tonight, we just have one speaker, Ms. Heidi Gilman Bennett from the Samuel Miller District.
Hello. Heidi Gilman Bennett, Samuel Miller District, speaking tonight as a well-informed citizen on high school overcrowding. I urge you not to approve the capital improvement program until after you consider the Scholar Studios enrollment data that comes later on tonight's agenda. Center Two can address the current overcrowding issue at AHS, which is super important. But Center Two will not address the overcrowding issues at Western or Monticello. A preview. Quote, "Current enrollment trends indicate that students are more likely to enroll in studios that are located close to their base schools." I'd say that's quite generous. Here's what I see in the numbers. In the past two years, only one student from Western traveled to AHS each year. Same for Monticello. Yes, Center One is slightly better, but there are only 14 students traveling every other day. The long-range planning data you see, you'll see, shows that Center Two will solve the high school overcrowding issues. The assumption made is that 200 Western students will sign up for studios at Center Two. That's way higher than the one that's actually traveling now. But even if that high number does travel from Western, that high school is still going to be overcrowded when Center Two opens. In fact, by fall 2027, ACPS projects that Western will have 174 students over capacity. And that does not take into account the students that continue to return from private schools, who are coming, with credit to Jen Siblet for being amazing. Monticello High School is less extreme, but also not far behind. To be clear, my son is in the last cohort of the Environmental Studies Academy. I know firsthand that academies, centers, studios can be highly compelling models. But please, let's stop pretending that having students travel every other day away from their base school is going to answer the high school overcrowding issues. I urge each of you to push the Board of Supervisors to develop, in the words of Ms. Acuff, "an ambitious strategic capital plan that meets the actual needs of our growing county." As you well know, all of the capital projects on the list are needed, both the improvements and the new buildings. We are falling further and further behind. Our kids are counting on each of you to partner with the Board of Supervisors to develop an ambitious strategic plan that ensures all of the projects get funded. But first, please take an honest look at the high school overcrowding. Kids at Monticello and Western can't wait until 2031 or even later to have increased capacity and high-quality spaces in which to learn. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment, but I will bang the gavel.
Thanks very much. Next, we have 7.0, our School Division Work Session, starting with 7.1, Long Range Planning 2024 Recommendation, Ms. Maya Kumazawa.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Maya Kumazawa, Director of Budget and Planning. And this evening, I'm here to provide follow-up information based on our conversation about the long-range planning recommendations. They include a follow-up on information on high school projects as well as a CIP funding review. I'd also like to thank David Storm, Member of the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee, for being here this evening. This item aligns with strategic goal number three, equitable and transformative resources. As a reminder, two weeks ago, you heard the recommendations for 2024 with regards to the next five years of the CIP. This evening, it is recommended that you approve a CIP request in order for you to be prepared for the joint work session with the Board of Supervisors on December 4. So beginning with high school projects, there was, wanted to provide some clarity on how we got to where we are today. 2017 was the year that the High School Facility Study, the FNI Study, was complete. And after that study, the school board approved the recommendations in that report. Shortly after that, we opened Center One, which has a capacity of about 120 daily students or eight classrooms. And the projects that you see following that high school study are all mostly a result of those recommendations from 2017. That includes the Western Albemarle Science Lab Edition, Center Two Construction, and also the, that was the impetus behind having an AHS and WAHS master plan study that would address the renovations that were recommended as part of that original 2017 study. We are a little bit behind on what the original timeline was in that study, largely due to the pandemic and the funding being paused for Center Two. But that funding has been reinstated, and it is in the current CIP. That's outside of the five-year request that we're discussing this evening. We're also in the process of building the AHS Corridor Edition that is a part of the AHS and WAHS master plan study. Center Two is planned to open in the fall of 2026, providing a capacity of 400 daily seats. This is an update from the slide that you saw last time. It provides a little bit more clarity on the request for the high school renovations. The costs have been updated to reflect, since this is a current project, the costs have been updated to reflect the costs that we have actually seen in the construction process. And we have also broken out the three high schools by fiscal year in terms of the timing of the funding we'd like to receive. So it puts Albemarle High School in fiscal year '26, Western Albemarle in fiscal year '27, and Monticello in fiscal year '28. You can also see on the slide the projects that have been completed to date. At AHS, the conversion of four sets of communal restrooms, communal restrooms. And then at Western, there has been partial corridor improvements. What's in progress now at AHS is a Level Two Corridor Edition and the planned work that the 20 additional million dollars would fund is listed here for FY '26. And you can see that same logic for the other two years. This is a summary slide on how the renovation, Center Two, and the high school capacity project kind of all fit together in terms of the timing. So as I mentioned, the high school Center Two, which is a current project, as well as the AHS Connector Ring projects, those are in progress currently, and both projects are scheduled to open for the '26-'27 school year. The high school capacity project in the current recommendation is that the design would begin in FY '29 and construction would begin in FY '30. And you can see how these three projects correspond with the projected capacity conflicts at the high school level overall. A little bit more on the high school capacity project. This was initially recommended in the 2023 LRPA-C report. It is, it was a placeholder project. The funding was year five, which was a placeholder amount for the design. As you can see, there are alternatives to what this project might be. It might be constructing a new conference at Hens of High School. It might be building additions onto our, additions to our current high schools or expanding the current high school center model. This was not detailed in its scope. And so while, since we are in an amendment year, meaning that the LRPA-C did not provide a comprehensive update, they will do that in 2025. So the recommendation is to direct the LRPA-C to provide a recommendation on what this project should be. It does require a lot more work put into it. So do we want to expand our current facilities? If so, how big should those expansions be? And what is the ideal high school size? A conversation we've had before. Should the Western Edition be planned earlier than the Monticello Edition? What is the timing of that? And then, as we saw on the renovation slide and as the conversation we had last time, can this work be combined with the renovation work that's recommended? So it doesn't have to be a standalone project, as you pointed out last time, but we need a lot more time put into what the recommendation is before we bring it back as part of any adjustment to the current request, which really is an update from last year. Any questions on high school projects?
Just clarification on that. So by approving the recommendation, you're suggesting that we look at it sooner, basically, but we're still going to approve the amount of money that you're asking for? Is that, can you clarify that? Maybe I'm just not understanding.
So the action that's requested this evening is to approve the request that you will, as a board, bring forward to the Board of Supervisors. That is a request only, and in terms of what will be funded and when, that is a conversation with the Board of Supervisors and throughout their budget process. So a request is, is a statement saying, these are our needs, and we agree to these needs. And then, in terms of what actually gets funded and implemented, is a separate discussion? I don't know if that answers it.
Thank you.
The other follow-up that I wanted to bring up was there were some questions about CIP funding historically and how that works. So here, just some overview slides on that. The CIP funding formula takes into account the shared revenues that Albemarle County collects that are split three ways. 10% of the increase in shared tax revenues go towards the CIP. 36% of that, of the shared revenues, goes towards county government operations, and 54% goes towards Albemarle County Public Schools annual operations. So you'll see that 54% when we talk about the annual operating budget. And this is, this is by formula, and the county's budget book has a very detailed breakout of exactly, historically, and what's projected, what these numbers are going to be. And so you can follow those along, and I can send that if anyone has any interest. Historically, this is, the yellow bars on here represent how much of, has been funded in the CIP. So these are not, these are capital budgets, meaning they're one-year snapshots. As you know, the Board of Supervisors does not appropriate funding for five years. And so again, they might adopt a five-year plan, but only the first year is appropriated, meaning that only the first year is approved for us to use. And so that's what the yellow bar is. That includes both county and ACPS projects. The orange column represents projects specific to ACPS. And this has been adjusted for inflation, so these are all in today's dollars. And you can see over on the right, in the green, the percentage of funding that has gone towards ACPS when you look at each year's capital budget. Another way to look at historical funding is how much did we request and how much did we receive? This is a little bit of an art in pulling the data together, so this is just indicative. You can, you know, present it in lots of different ways. But what this chart is showing is the, kind of the blue area is the overall request when you look at past LRPA-C reports. They have been adjusted. Sometimes there are years in which, as Ms. Spillman talked about, a project might not necessarily be in the formal request, but it got funded later when there was a placeholder. That has happened in the past. So these are approximate amounts, and you can see over the past few cycles, we've ranged from 44% to 61% of our requests being funded. You can see the blue area- You can see the blue area is increasing pretty significantly. And that's what the table on the bottom attempts to show, is that as projects aren't funded, they continue to get pushed out. And then, when we bring in new projects in the out-years, the request just kind of increases every year. And that's what we're seeing there. There was also a question about debt capacity and how the county determines how much funding there is for the CIP on borrowed proceeds. This is a slide from fall of 2023. During the joint work session, I anticipate that we will get updated information. But debt capacity is calculated based on a ratio of outstanding debt versus assessed value of taxable property. So while this is outdated information, you can see that there is some capacity that the county has to take on more debt. The other consideration, though, is how will you fund that ongoing debt service associated with taking on that new debt? And so, there's a 5% pay-as-you-go, that's a one-time funding need for issuing any debt, and then annual recurring debt service for each year of that. And so that comes into play when the county is building their annual operating budget, how much can be funded in terms of the ongoing expenses related to the debt. And so I'll make sure that an update is provided to you all at the work session. So with that, this is a summary of the five-year CIP request. The numbers have been updated slightly. As I mentioned, this is due to the high school renovations project that, where we've gotten updated figures. And the handout that you have has a more detailed version of this, and that is the request that would go to the Board of Supervisors if you were to approve it. So I'll take any questions at this time, or if you're ready to make a motion.
Any questions or discussion?
Well, you've heard me say this before, Maya. I mean, we are obligated to submit a needs-based budget, and if you look at the historical funding, we've not dug ourselves out of the hole from, what, 2010, the Great Recession era? We're behind. We've got under 80 classrooms in trailers, and, you know, the high school center was only part of a package that was going to address capacity. It was also going to be expansion and renovation of all of our existing high schools. That was approved for, you know, 2019, which meant it should have opened, what, in '23? It should be open by now, and we should be thinking about a Center Three, maybe in the, in the Western feeder pattern. So, so, A, I think that the Board of Supervisors could be more aggressive in financing capital projects. And I do appreciate that the state needs to step up as well. But how many trailers do we think we should support as a school division? The Western feeder pattern, the Northern feeder pattern school is, what, 29, 30? Is that when that's supposed to open? What do we have? Eight trailers, 10 trailers outside of Baker Butler? Trailers have their place, and I know many people live in trailers, but I don't think it's really the best educational environment for eight-year-olds to be in a trailer all day long during the school day. And I think we should ask, I mean, I know that people in the community are both confused and concerned about why they haven't built another traditional high school. And I think that's a fair question, and we did look at that. But one of the reasons is, if you're looking at these numbers, a new high school's going to cost $116 million. And when we put together the package of a series of centers plus expansions and modifications to existing high schools, it was presented to save the county money. I mean, it was a $90,000 package for the first, you know, center and modernization. And now it's been five years since that was initially approved. So I think part of our ask and our discussion with the supervisors needs to be, we need to have a more aggressive, strategic capital plan to catch up. Because 54% sounds like a lot, but if the pie is too small to begin with, then it's 50, I mean, we need to expand the pie so we can have 54% or 50, whatever, I think it was 54% of a bigger pie. Because we will never catch up. And, you know, we, I mean, we're talking about land acquisition for another school, perhaps another elementary school in the Western feeder pattern. That won't be until 2050 at this rate, anyway. Grandstand over.
I really appreciate those comments, Dr. Akof. I agree. I think that if it is our job to present a needs-based budget, then we need to be putting what our actual needs are in that request. And, you know, Western had 100 more students than were anticipated just this year. What does that look like five years from now? And if, you know, our request is not going to even begin to deal with that, I think that maybe we do come out big with the Board of Supervisors and start getting more aggressive and, and start, you know, yes, we want to save the county money, but it's our job to make sure that our students and our teachers have the environment they need to learn. And not just trailers, but, you know, the center model is great, but I appreciate Ms. Gilman Bennett's comments as well, that, you know, that is not for every student, and they're not coming from Western. It's far. And so I think that, in my mind, we need to ask for more and shoot bigger and start pushing back on them. So, thank you for that.
I definitely agree about the needs-based request. I think in this particular one, I am compelled by the need for us to be thoughtful with LRPAC, to have time to really understand what that looks like. We had a similar sort of situation a couple of years ago, when we were trying to figure out how much to pay our bus drivers, to get more bus drivers in. And there was sort of a, an impromptu request for, well, we'll pay one cent more than Charlottesville does. Or we'll, it was just something that we couldn't do here on the dais, like, just out of nowhere that we had to look at. It turned out that we ended up paying a little bit more than Charlottesville. So I think in that way, for just what we're talking about with the high school capacity plan, I think it's important to be thoughtful about that. And as you mentioned, Maya, you know, we're in an amendment year, I guess. Do we have four of those? We do one, and then we do four amendments? How do we, how does that work?
It's just, it's a biannual process. So every other year, the LRPAC will submit a formal comprehensive report. And then the second year is usually bringing in year five and making updates to costs is traditionally what we've done.
So would that be something that would be in the next year's full plan?
Yep. So in the 2025, so a year from now, you'll have a comprehensive recommendation from the committee.
Okay.
So that would be in the next. But the way that this is structured is that, knowing that the timing is an issue and we need to bring in year five, the high school capacity is in the five-year request. It's more of a placeholder, and you all did this when we had the, the construction of Mountain, the new elementary school in Mountain View. We had it as a placeholder project. There was more study done to determine what that project would look like, and then we slid in what the project was. But it was usually part of the recommendation, just for long-term awareness and planning, that, hey, you know, telling the public, we know it's needed. We don't have the details fleshed out yet. We are working on it, but we know it's a need, and that's why it's listed on the slide.
Maya, just real quick, the amount that you have in there is a placeholder, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it could be a lot more than that.
I guess this is just a procedural question, Ms. Kumazawa. How is this presented? Is this, does this come from the board in a letter to the supervisors? And could we, if that's the case, or even if it isn't, can we, in letter form, stress our concern that we need to be more urgent about a strategic capital plan? I mean, I don't know. Something along those lines.
Did we do that last year?
Yes.
Yes. But we can continue doing it.
I'm for continuation of that.
So I guess this is for the newbie in me. What happens if we vote no? And do we go back and ask for, do we redo this to ask for more money? Or is it, we approve this, and then we go to them and say, we actually want more than this?
Well, I think this is a proposed request. And we could write a strong letter saying that this captures some of our needs, but certainly not all, and we would like a more aggressive funding approach. I mean...
I mean, I don't know what more looks like today.
Right.
If we don't have this to even start to have a conversation with, because we know historically, we're not going to get to number 10.
Right.
We probably will only get to, like, three or four, possibly.
Right. But our joint meeting isn't until December 5th, so we do have a wee bit of time.
Yeah, that was my question, is do we try to take a little more time to put in a more robust request before just approving today, when we have a little bit more time to do that?
Well, I guess I would flip it and suggest approving it with reservations with amendments to come.
Perhaps.
I think just, logistically, if we did not approve it today, if, and again, I don't know what another one would look like. And then we wouldn't have time to approve it by then, by the December meeting.
Right. Okay.
Okay. I have a question on the high school capacity project. And I'd need some clarification. How many additional classrooms at Western and at Monticello would be in that, or has it been completely decided by long-range planning?
That's, that is, so staff recommends that you direct the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee to determine that. And that's, that's why it stands as a placeholder, is because the scope is not detailed enough to really put a specific project on it. And so it's a little bit, the committee would need more time, staff would need more time to develop a fully thoughtful recommendation. So that is the question that I would say you should ask the committee to come back with.
Okay. So I guess this question is sort of hypothetical, too. So theoretically, would the 110 million be enough to address the overcrowding that we anticipate at both Western and at Monticello, or down there?
Yes. The placeholder amount is an estimate of the cost of building an addition at Monticello and Western. That is how we came up with the placeholder amount.
Remind me of the timing. If we request long-range planning to do the next study, the next report would be in the fall?
Next fall, yes.
That's right.
Fall 2026. 2025, okay, yeah. Yeah, myself, right, 2025.
So if you get in the 2026 budget.
So, as I understand it, you know, we're in the five-year here, and we could potentially move that capacity project up within that five-year plan, if the Long Range Planning Committee gives us the information we need.
Okay. I think I see what you guys are, so what approving this plan would mean that you would not have funding for the high school capacity project in year one, FY '26? Because by the time we get the next year's recommendation, we'll be beyond that. Technically, if you thought this was the highest priority at this point next year, and you say, we want funding in FY '27, you could ask for that during this process next year. It doesn't have to stay in this version of timing.
Okay.
Because essentially, this is, this is the board's own list. So this is the list that you're recommending in the order that you're recommending. If, you know, by some miracle, the Board of Supervisors fully funded it, it would be $560 million. So the, the idea of like adding more to it, there's another way of approaching it, too, which is, if they funded it at the same rate it was funded last year, it would be, they would fund about 300 and some change of it. So it's possible that through the aggression that you were talking about earlier, that you could potentially get the whole thing.
Ambition, not aggression.
So, that's also, they've never fully funded a request, so, you know, also pushing for full funding. And then you, as the, you, you still, even after it's approved, you can toggle your own projects up and down on the list. It's your list, you created it. What you're, what you're doing is just providing your best estimate of all these total projects that you, you are mission-critical in the five-year plan, hoping and making a great case that they would fully fund it. They just have not ever done that. But you get to move things around, you get to reprioritize, you can decide until they're, they're on the street with getting bids and/or perhaps prioritizing something before LRPAC has a chance to come up with a solid recommendation on what to do. Those are kind of the two constraints that you have.
I think just one more observation is that, I think because we never get funded, we sort of self-censor what we even put on the list. So instead of doing a robust, you know, needs-based ask, we sort of self-censor it down, and then we get half or third of that.
That's a great point.
Anyway, I would nonetheless, with great reluctance, move that we accept this proposed CIP request, accompanied by a letter urging more ambitious strategic planning for capital for the schools.
A second.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Akof, seconded by Dr. Berlin and Mr. Pace. Is there any further discussion?
I mean, I think that we've all said this. This is a very hard thing to do, right? We, I think I said this last year when we were in the same place, is, you know, we're paying off, you know, as Dr. Akof said, 20 years of underfunding. And I think this is a place where it's really going to be important, you know, this year, next year, and into the future, you know, for us to work with this entire Albert Park County community, you know, people with kids in school and not in school, just to under, to help them understand how important this is for both the livelihood of kids currently in school, but for the community as a whole. And having strong schools, having beautiful schools, both make this a place that people want to move to. But also, by having teachers and students in schools that are beautiful and engaging and just amazing places to learn, that they deserve to have, that's a right that the students have as well. And so thinking about how we, kind of as a school board and as a community, can really educate. So when these votes come before the Board of Supervisors, we have other people who can help us in that advocacy.
Yeah, it's pretty frustrating to, for us to be submitted a needs-based budget, which we have carefully curated the needs, and then for them not to be fully funding it. I mean, if we could just at least push for the fully funding, that'd be a start.
And I think the communication is going to be key, not just internally, but to the community, really. I think the onus is on us, because we see the need, and we're the ones going and asking for this funding, that we really engage in the community and really communicate the need and what it's going to take to get this money.
I think we also need to recognize and communicate to our constituents that, A, Virginia grossly underfunds public education, and the J-LAR study last year indicated that if you even raised us up to the national median, it would be $1,900 more student, more funding per student. And for, for our 14,000 students, that's over $26 million. And secondly, both the county and the school board advocated for the one-cent sales tax dedicated for capital that passed both houses of the General Assembly and was a late veto by Governor Youngkin. That would also generate about $26 million. So I know our constituents are concerned about schools and school environments, as we all are, but they need to be, we don't hold the purse. All we can do is do a forceful, as Dr. Ha said, aggressive but ambitious ask, but we don't control the purse strings. I mean, and the county has generally been supportive. I think they could do more, but the state can also do a lot more. We are meeting with our legislators next week to advocate for the one-cent sales tax again.
In the presentation to the supervisors, at any point in time, are they made aware of the capacity problems that we are facing? I mean, point blank.
We will submit this information, the capacity chart, this recommendation, with your approval, we would submit that to the Board of Supervisors.
And the enrollment.
Yep, and this, the story really doesn't change too much year to year. They all received copies of the LRPAC report last fall as well, so...
So, so maybe we should take them on a school visit for, and some of the trailer rooms?
Yeah. I love that idea, I think that's what we should all commit to inviting, for tours at the schools, to make sure they kind of see what those needs are.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion carries, thank you very much, Maya.
Thank you, Ms. Kumzal.
All right, next we have presentation of the proposed 25-26 school calendar, Dr. Kaiser and Dr. Irazery.
Thank you Chair Lee and school board members. This fall, the calendar committee has convened to engage in the calendar development. And Dr. Eric Irazery, Director of Equity, School, Family, and Community Engagement, will present the 2025-26 school year calendar development.
Christine, how do I get it up there from the PowerPoint? Sorry. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Sorry, I knew I was going to miss that.
That's okay. I pulled it up for you. Yeah, this is yours.
Yeah.
So, oops. So I'm going to minimize, oops. Are you expanding it? We need to get it off the desk.
It's almost right there.
Oh, there it is, sorry. Sorry.
Got it? Working together as a team. We will end, all right, we're going to go ahead and present the calendar, the calendar for this year, and it's been, it was a great experience for us, and we're going to go through our process. So this aligns with Goal Two and Goal Three, affirming and empowering our communities, and equitable and transformation resources. So the guiding principles, our guidelines were developed to take into consideration teacher contracts, Virginia codes, and the ACPS mission and vision. We also wanted to ensure that professional learning days were included, as they're important to provide staff time to deepen their understanding of instructional practices that support student learning and address the mission and vision of ACPS. Thank you. Specifically for this calendar, the committee was tasked with looking into the benefits and drawbacks of the earlier start and end dates, and the possibility of ending the semester before winter break. At the same time, we wanted to make sure we kept the minimum 176 instructional days, the two-week winter break, and as much consistency with Charlottesville City as possible. The calendar committee operated on an abbreviated timeline in order to allow the board time to give notice to families and staff if changes were made. We first met on September 5th, administered an initial staff survey to collect information from the broader staff on September 13th. And using the committee input and information from that survey, we developed and administered a comprehensive school-community survey that was sent out on October 3rd. We then used October 17th to discuss the data in order to inform the board recommendations. This is the original draft sent in the survey. You can see the highlights of this calendar to the left of this picture. But you will see that the final recommendation does look a little different. So, looking at the comprehensive survey, what does the data tell us? The survey consisted of four questions specific to the draft, and open-ended response opportunities, in addition to demographic questions. We had a total of 2,580 responses, which is significantly higher than surveys in the past. For the first three questions, ratings were done on a star or Likert scale, with one being unfavorable, and five being favorable to the presented draft. The first question was, "To what degree do you support the draft?" You can see here, 36% of the responses indicated a one or two, which is unfavorable. 16% were neutral, and 48% were favorable to the draft. Question two dealt specifically with examining feedback on support for the early start and end dates, asking, "To what degree do you support starting and ending the school year earlier?" While a majority of the respondents supported the draft calendar in question one, they were a little more evenly divided when it comes to starting and ending early, with 44% saying they did not support moving the dates earlier, 12% being neutral, and 43% being in favor of moving the start and end dates earlier. And this is fairly consistent with the previous survey from '23-24. The next question pertained to moving spring break back to the first full week in April. 45% of responses were in favor to moving spring break back to the first week in April. 30% wanted to keep spring break where it is currently, and that split between the last week of March and the first week of April. 24% were neutral on this question. And this is important, because in looking at the survey that Charlottesville City Schools sent out recently, they're showing a two-year calendar cycle, with spring break being split March and April in year one, and then in year two reverting back to the first full week in April. We examined the qualitative data and tried to isolate comments on either side of the calendar or the early start and end dates. 420 responses were in support of either the draft calendar or the early start and end dates. 98 were against, and 69 comments were neutral or supportive of either way, of either choice. Among the concerns were the initial short summer vacation that would happen if we switched over, and interruptions to family schedules, which could explain the discrepancy between question one or two in the comprehensive survey. Here's the participant breakdown, you can see here, ACPS families are about 56%. And I do want to highlight that we had 10% from students, which 10% of, you know, about 250 students, and that was helped from our Student Senate and our school board reps. So, thank you. Here's the participant breakdown, and the demographic breakdown, and the word cloud to the right shows the neighborhoods in which the respondents live, or identify where they live. And we did just want to show the initial staff feedback on the draft calendar. Just, this is a heat map over to the right. Calendar E was that original draft I just showed. And the staff indicated that they were in favor of the early start and end, ending semester before winter break. They did like how the calendar paired the workdays and professional learning days and alignment with other school districts. And they did like the balance of workdays, professional learning days, and student instructional days. So, this is the revised calendar, and there are a few changes that we highlighted in red. So we did shift, starting on November 4th, the family conference day to a workday for staff. And we wanted to make sure that the buildings were free for voting purposes. And for the most part, a lot of our schools use that as flex time for teachers when they had their conference days. All of our schools were not having conferences during that November 4th day. We also added two windows when we surveyed, when we heard from our families, and when we surveyed staff, they were in favor of having a spring and a fall conferences for their students. So instead of just isolating it to one day, we have three-week window that schools can coordinate to meet the needs of their families, but also ensure that they're not having family conference nights or family conference days on top of each other. So the schools in that same feeder pattern would have those days, those conference nights on different evenings. We also moved the workday from January 5th, the end of winter break, back to the beginning of winter break on the 19th. We shifted the professional learning day and workday on March 16th and 17th to the 19th and 20th. And that was based on feedback from families and from our administrators at small schools. Small schools indicated that instructional time for enrichments is impacted when these same days are missed for professional learning days, workdays, and holidays. And usually, those are Mondays. So we were able to find a window where we could shift at least one of those sessions over to a Thursday and a Friday. And then this calendar does show that we moved spring break back to the first week in April. So potential benefits of an early start and early end, it would be a closer alignment with our surrounding counties and Charlottesville City Schools. For folks that need childcare, after-school care, and summer programming, especially staff that live outside the county, this would alleviate some of the stress that, especially Albemaro and Charlottesville City being on different calendars, that would alleviate some of that stress. We would end the semester at winter break. Advanced placement students would have more days before testing. And we would have consistency, again, with Charlottesville City Schools, especially with K-Tech. Obviously, 75% of K-Tech are Albemaro County Public School students. Specific points to the proposed 25-26 calendar. This does move spring break back to the first week in April. This calendar does cluster professional learning and workdays. And what that does is that creates less four-day weeks, and that's something that our staff and our families wanted to see less of. It maintains the two-week winter break. It provides flexibility for fall and spring conferences for families. And again, the voting day is shifted back to a teacher workday. We did do a little research and just showed, this is our, these are our surrounding counties in our region, and you see, there's three waves. The first week in August, the second week of August, and then some of the schools go back that third week, Rockingham and Harrisonburg, with Charlottesville starting on August 13th. So there will be some challenges if the board does decide to move to an early start and end, especially HR. HR would see a one-time salary true-up for 10- and 11-month exempt employees, including required and elected benefits. Reoccurring adjustments to the deduction schedule for 10-month non-exempts would reflect 18 pay periods of deductions, rather than the already-established 20 pay periods of deductions. And if you click on that link, there is more information there from our HR department. Building Services, Operations, and Transportation would need to make adjustments to meet the timelines for the beginning of the year. Timelines for the semester-based classes would need to be moved up, and we would need to make adjustments to pacing, instructional pacing. Staff, students, and families would have a shorter break for that first summer. And the summer school timeline would need to be adjusted for the first year. So the calendar committee made two recommendations. Either adopt the revised calendar draft for, for the next year as is, or delay the implementation of the revised calendar draft by one year. And there was voice from the committee, in any case, to adopt a two-year calendar cycle, instead of a yearly calendar cycle, just to provide families and staff more opportunity to plan ahead.
I was just going to make a comment that I, you know, I think we're at a place that we have to go ahead and do this. It is aligned to other districts where a lot of our teachers have kids or families, you know, have conflicts that have come up for different reasons. And so, I do know, and I know the, the calendar committee has talked, talked a lot about this, just how difficult that first summer is going to be on families, you know, regarding, you know, understanding new changes and plans that have already been made. As we think about switches in childcare and summer programs, and then, you know, particularly, I think about our summer school, and that being a, you know, a smaller window of time, both for kids to have the summer school services, but also we've made great strides in getting more teachers to teach in summer school. And that's going to be hard when they have fewer times. And then last, I think, our amazing Building Services people gives, will definitely give them a smaller amount of time. That said, we have to do this at some point, and so we continue to push it, and I think we can't push it any longer, we just need to make that move and do this. And lastly, I'm so excited that the students, thank you for making sure the students were included in this, because I think it's still important, both in have community members' voice, families' voice, teachers' voice, but students as well.
I also really wanted to thank Dr. Kaiser and Dr. Irazery, because the last time we were taking this vote was, what, like eight months ago or something? And at that time, you know, we were getting a lot of feedback that we really couldn't be making any changes with such short notice. And you all moved it up by like three or four months. Amazing work, and I know that you've done very inclusive work, very thoughtful work, and I really appreciate it, so thank you very much.
All right.
All right, so this will be on consent for next, next month? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, next we are scheduled to have a break. Whoa, we're right on time, so at 7:45, we will be back. And do we, do we start here in, do we start here? Okay, so we'll be back at 7:45? Okay, so we'll be back at seven forty-five?
Redesign efforts can take them into account. With more than half of our students entering into adult life without a post-secondary degree or certification, it's all the more important that we focus on supporting students to prepare for college and attain certifications while they're still with us in high school to ensure that they have the tools they need to succeed in their future. As you know, we're also keeping an eye on student engagement. When we compare our school division with the national average, we see that across the country, students value school less as they get older. However, you can also see that our middle schools and high schools are below the national average, and this is an opportunity to add value to our secondary students' experiences of school. This leads us to the three compelling tenets of high school redesign. We seek to leverage student interests, talents, and goals to engage all students in innovative, rigorous learning experiences in order to prepare our young adults for success in high demand post-secondary pathways. Those core principles propel us as we develop the various components of high school redesign. Tonight, we'll focus on scholar studios, formerly known as the career learning communities. Next, Rusty Karlock will share a little bit about the current state of the scholar studios.
Thank you, Megan, and thank you, School Board. Good evening. I'm Rusty Karlock. I work with the Equity Center at the University of Virginia and Alamo County Public Schools in the Office of Community Engagement. We're going to just look a little bit at where we are in terms of enrollment within our studios, who's enrolling, and then also a little bit projecting forward to what enrollment would need to look like in the next couple of years in order to fill Center Two to capacity at its first cohort of ninth graders when it opens. So these first charts show enrollment over the last two years by studio using each studio's gateway course as the metric for cohort enrollment. That's the first course that students would take within the sequence. Overall, enrollment grew by around 8% from last year in this year's cohort, and that growth was driven mostly by two programs at Albemarle High School, the SOLF Studio, formerly the Math, Engineering, and Science, CLC, and IMPACT, or Leadership in Global Studies. When we look at enrollment trends across schools, we see that there are few students enrolling in a studio that is located at a base school different from their own. For example, in Thrive and Impact Studios at Albemarle High School, seen here to the right of this chart, 100% of the students enrolled in those gateway courses were Albemarle High School students. Similarly, even among more popular studios like TARA at Western Albemarle High School and PULSE at Monticello High School and SOLF at Albemarle High School, we see that overall fewer than 10% of students enroll in a studio that's located at another base school. Students at Center One represent a wider diversity of base school students than studios located within a base school. These charts show the racial diversity and ethnic diversity within each studio and how those compare to the diversity across our high schools. One of our goals with our studios is for enrollment to represent the diversity we have within our schools overall, across financial need, race, ethnicity, gender, special needs, and language. Our current studio enrollment shows improvement towards this goal compared with the academy model that existed prior to studios. However, there continues to be work to do to support greater representation within these programs. We have more historical data on enrollment at Center One and can look more deeply at demographic trends there. We can see that racial and ethnic diversity at Center One has increased, even as total enrollment has also grown. The proportion of students with disabilities at Center One also increased and is now close to representative of overall trends within the school division. Two places where enrollment at Center One is less representative, where outreach could potentially improve, is in representation of female students and English learners. Gender representation across our other studios mostly mirrors that within the division, with the exception of PULSE and Thrive Studios, which have an underrepresentation of male This chart shows the gap between current enrollment trends in studios and capacity at Centers One and Two. The light blue bars show the capacity for one cohort or grade level at Centers One and Two. Center One has capacity, for example, of around 60 students in each grade level, and this is calculated by taking the total capacity, multiplying it by two, because we have students coming every other day, and then dividing it by four. So in a few years, starting next year, we'll have four grade levels at each of, at Center One, and then when Center Two opens, we would also have four grade levels there. So the orange bars on the right show enrollment in studio gateway courses. It's not to say that all other studios would be enrolled at Center Two. This is just to show where we are in terms of our current enrollment and how that compares to capacity at each of our current centers and the future Center Two. Link Studio housed at Center One was only slightly below what would be needed to fill Center One if it had all four grade levels in the building. Center One can take around 60 students in each cohort, and they enrolled around 55 students in their gateway course this year. This chart shows a growth in enrollment in all of the studios currently located at Albemarle High School, IMPACT, SOLF, Thrive, and Venture, compared to the capacity at Center Two, as well as possible benchmarks within each of those studios that would allow Center Two to meet capacity in its initial ninth grade cohort when it opens in 2026. Benchmarks are based on historical patterns of enrollment and interest in the respective studios, as well as a goal of creating sections of around 20 students for each studio course. In order to meet these benchmarks, enrollment in those studios would need to increase between around 80 to 100% over the next two years. It's important to note that even with significant growth in enrollment in studios, Center Two would not begin at full capacity at its opening. This chart shows an enrollment projection for Center Two by grade level or year in the program. It is likely that the sophomore scholars number would be higher here. This is a very conservative estimate, given the outreach efforts we will have this year, but we still need to wait until the spring to see what those, the types of fruit that those outreach efforts bear. But this gives us a general view of how enrollment will be lower at the higher grade levels when Center Two opens for studio scholar students. Now I'm going to turn it over to Katina Dudley, Science Coordinator, and she's going to let us know more about the scholar's steering team and the upcoming changes in the program to better meet student needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karlock, and good evening, School Board. My name is Katina Dudley, and I am the Coordinator for Science in Alamo County. So earlier this year, we developed an interdepartmental Scholars Steering Committee. In anticipation of Center Two opening in 2026, we developed this steering team. The steering team was established to collaborate across the departments for the holistic implementation of high school redesign, addressing daily challenges that affect students and teachers. The goal of this committee is to create a sustainable support structure that removes barriers, ultimately increasing enrollment, access, and success for the high school redesign initiative and for Center Two. This fall, we've taken on four focus areas that began late summer and then have continued through this fall. Those four areas include course plans of studies to prepare for registration in the next month, studio leadership, transportation, and communication. We have consistently shared the course sequence that you see on the bottom. Based on student feedback last fall and this spring, we revised the course sequences to include additional core courses, physics, English 10, and government. Students who participate in the scholar studios will likely choose this experience based on their interest. So we're setting up school links so that students can look at what the opportunities are and then select these studios based on the interest that they have and through surveys that they are engaging in. The inclusion of these core courses at the studio will allow teachers to leverage interest in their course pathways in order to increase the rigor and the engagement of the core academic courses. Counselors asked us to kind of develop a course sequence and what this would look like as students enroll in courses at their base schools and at their studio sites. And so we just kind of developed this out so that counselors could see how to schedule students at their base school and then what courses to schedule students in at their studio site. And then for each studio, we developed what that pathway sequence would look like. And then within each studio, there are pathways, so that's why this kind of expands out. So what you see here is one sample of Thrive Studio, but this sample would be for students that are engaging in the education pathway. There's also a human development pathway that students could engage in through the Thrive Studio as well. These course plans will be available to our school counselors, but we're also making them available to our students and to our families. The steering committee is examining the issue of time demand on our studio leaders, and we're looking at how other school divisions staff their studio leaders. Our initial investigation has shown us that many school divisions provide leadership and planning time. That is a model that we also previously used here for our student academies. Moving forward, we are looking at the feasibility of being able to provide time for leaders to start and sustain these high-quality programs. The role of a studio leader involves providing leadership and serving as the primary contact for the studio while building relationships with community partners, higher education, community leaders, and families. Key responsibilities for these leaders include promoting studio opportunities for our students, implementing authentic field experiences and work-based learning, and also supporting students in earning industry credentials. Additionally, the role includes mentoring student ambassadors, attending monthly professional learning sessions, monitoring data for access and success, and staying informed about current trends in the studio pathways. And we know as high school educators, the best way for us to stay informed about these pathways and about all these changes that are happening with career opportunities for our students is to stay engaged with our community partners. We also wanted to just take a minute to bring up transportation. We've been working with our transportation department since the summer to ensure that students would have transportation to and from studios. We currently provide satellite stops for students who participating, who participate in programming at our comprehensive high schools. So those currently include some of our career learning communities, our early college scholars program, and JROTC. And then we provide shuttle runs for students that participate in programs at Center One, Lab, and K-Tech. This is essentially what the satellite stops look like currently for our students who are transported from a satellite stop to their high school and then returning to that satellite stop in the afternoons. And you can see that some of our students are not returning to a base school until around 5:00 PM, and this continues to present a challenge for our students that want to participate in extracurricular activities. So they get back to their school at 5:00, then they also have to change if they're participating in an athletic event or an athletic activity. And so this still presents a challenge for us and for our students that want to participate in both. And a lot of times, our students will choose their athletic over their other opportunities. I just wanted to highlight the shuttle runs because as Center Two opens, Center Two will become another shuttle run. And essentially, shuttle runs will allow students to arrive at school on time and then take a shuttle. They will start their school day later at the center and end their school day earlier so that they can be returned to school to either ride the bus home or to participate in extracurricular activities with their classmates at their base schools. So we just wanted to highlight what those were looking like. We're trying to put out some clear communication around what the difference is between a satellite stop and a shuttle run, because a lot of times, these two different types of transportation opportunities get confused, and then people think that we're kind of not communicating that well. So we've also added this to our school division website so that families can also follow and read up on this as well. I'm going to return this back to Megan Maynard so that she can continue to talk about the communication initiatives that we've also done this fall.
The fourth focus area for the scholar steering team this fall has been around communication. We started by partnering with our communications team and our community engagement team to identify where key student and family engagement touchpoints would be and have begun to share information with secondary staff and counselors. We've also launched our student ambassador program, and we are developing a robust set of communication resources for our staff and stakeholders. I think on your desks, there should be a copy of two sample resources. Those are not final drafts, but you can start to see. The first one is for the scholar studio, and what could be helpful is if you flip to the back, there's the list of the 12 different studios, and a lot of people appreciate that as a cheat sheet. So as we're sharing throughout the night, that might be a good spot for you guys to Our students gave us a lot of feedback, our student ambassadors during feedback sessions, and one of the things we heard was that they would like a more elevated registration experience, more than just signing up for courses in a course selection process in Power School. And so as we partnered with our students and our studio teacher leaders, they helped us to draft a more elevated experience. The items highlighted were added based on our student suggestions. So one of the things that we're excited about in December, all of our students in eighth grade, so about 1,000 students, will get to visit both Center One and K-Tech. We'll do about 100 students per day for 10 days. Additionally, our communications team will be partnering to do scholar studio spotlight, so doing one studio a week this spring to give more information about the studio. We traditionally have done career learning community and academy information nights, and our students let us know that no one wants to go to an information night, but that they would be interested in an ignite night, and they imagine that as potentially around a campfire with casual conversations and hands-on demos. I know Lakeside Middle School has also done a similar night with some of their events, and so we're going to learn from them and see if we can meet the ideas that our students shared. Additionally, students would submit their preferences in a student preference form that would be due kind of at the same time that all course registrations usually finish, which is around the end of February. And to create some excitement, once that registration process is over, we're going to do match days where students would be matched with the studio that they had selected and preferred and to kind of open up a welcome box welcoming them to that studio. That timeline also was based on the feedback we received from student ambassadors. You can see here a little bit about our, some pictures and some focus from our student ambassador launch. This was a few weeks ago. We were able to bring all the studio teacher leaders and student ambassadors together for the first time. As you know, last year was the pilot of career learning communities, and so this year, as we've kind of grown in capacity, we're able to launch the student ambassadors. Collectively during this time, they reflected on what makes their studio unique and what experiences are most compelling about their studio. They collaboratively provided input and direction on how best to share studios to middle and high school students, and it was really a joy to be a part of the excitement and engagement with these students and teacher leaders. We wanted to share some of their perspectives and voices with you tonight, and with this being a non-student day, many of them are traveling, some of them are doing college visits, so they weren't all here. We've captured a few of their voices, a few of their videos, and so I'm not going to play all of them, but the resources are available for those who'd like to click in them. You can read some of their reflections, and if you click on the sound button, it could also play their voices. What you'll see is students' appreciation for the way that the studios allow them to dive deep into a specialized area of interest and to connect with other students, teachers, and experts who share their interest. Let's see, I'm going to play this one. Maybe? No? Okay. You can see the students' experience shared that it was nice to be surrounded by people who are passionate about what they're passionate about and to connect with students across the county who have similar goals for their future. Should I try one more time? Let's see what happens. It worked earlier when we tried it, but it's okay. We've got them saved, so you're welcome to view them at a later time. What's exciting about this particular image, this is students in our Thrive learning, studio from Albemarle High School, and they are actually at Greer in the preschool classroom, and so you can see the excitement of both the community expert, the students, and the preschool and the high school students. Students are also really excited about their hands-on learning opportunities. They shared how in Link Studio and cybersecurity, the capture at the flag event is one that's really special, and I know students from Link Studio were just there today in a cybersecurity competition even on their off day. Hands-on learning is really what makes these studios unique. I do want to play a video, hopefully this one will work, from Sienna Robinson, one of our SOLF Studio student ambassadors. No volume, let's see. It's not muted. Is there something on here?
We did test this earlier. 17th grade at Albemarle High School, and I am an ambassador for SOLF Studios. So what excites me about SOLF Studios is how engaging it is. We do many different projects, such as we built a straw launcher, we built a car powered by string, we built paper rockets, we did paper airplanes, like analyzed different designs and used a decision matrix to determine which one would be best, and we're also currently doing research on different planes in order to learn about aviation. So we're kind of doing like a lot of different things in different fields just to like get us more exposure in high school, which is really important to figure out what you want to do in college or like in the workforce, wherever you choose to go. And I'd say that what I'd want students to know is that SOLF Studio is kind of like its own community. We have people who are interested in STEM, going from around different ages, different grades, and they all just want to learn about STEM and just want to have fun together and collaborate on different projects. So I would definitely recommend joining if you're interested in science, technology, engineering, math, any of those sorts of things, because it will help set you up for the future. Thank you.
It was really exciting to be around all the student ambassadors they're so excited about.
Hello, my name is Sienna Robinson.
There we go. About all the experiences that they're having. In addition to student voices, we also have some teachers here tonight, Jeremy Dove from the PULSE Studio and Trey Barlow from SOLF Studio, who also brought another one of his students with him. So I wanted to make sure to give an opportunity for them to share their voices as well.
All right, well, good evening. I'm Jeremy Dove, and so I've been an educator at Monticello High School for 26 years and been a part of the Health and Medical Sciences since its inception. I can certainly attest to the relevancy of a career exploration experience. When I was a high schooler at Albemarle High School, I took the Teach-Guidet program, and that was one of the things that helped me kind of like make a choice between a career in medicine and a career in education. And so education has been the path, but now I've been able to integrate that passion with health and medicine as well. And so with PULSE Studio, you know, we hope to basically help students to identify the thing that they're interested in, help clarify those interests, and then magnify their excitement and interest in the world of health and medical science so that we can hopefully foster some key individuals that will start to fill those important niches of careers in health and medicine that are so sorely needed. And, you know, with our capstone experiences, students have been able to interface with real-world mentors and see, kind of put trial in different hats to see what that career looks like and kind of foster that interest so that they're ready for that post-secondary
Hello, School Board. I'm Trey Barlow. Nice to be here. So I'm the lead on the SOLF Studio, and it is a great experience for students to get hands-on experience with not only engineering, but computer science and data science, three courses that I teach myself. And it is a great opportunity for our students and also teachers to interact with students and lead them into a career and experience where they might find their passions and find who they really are as, and their purpose of finding their career and occupation. So I love my job, and I think SOLF Studio is not a replacement for Mesa, but it is a transformation for, to get more students of diverse populations into more STEM fields and also just more rigorous experiences for those students as well, and also our Yale populations and our disability, students with disabilities. So, thank you.
In addition to being here tonight, our scholar studio teachers will be working with all of the 6th through 12th grade counselors on making connections on November 4th, and they'll be attending many curriculum showcase nights for our high school students and rising high school students coming up in December. So we thank you for being here and for all that you guys are doing and all the time and leadership that you put in. The experiences that our students are having in school links are exciting, in scholar studios are exciting, but we know that we have work to do to increase awareness of these opportunities so that more students and families throughout our division are aware of these experiences. This spring, in collaboration with our internal communications team, we partnered with the CURE team to also help us build an improved communication plan and resources. Tonight, Blaine Lay and Casey Hayes from the CURE team will share a little about the work that they have done and the recommendations that they have shared with us.
Hello there. Thank you for having us. It's an honor to be here. My name is Blaine Lay from CURE. My mother was a teacher and a principal for many, many years when I was young. She saw the writing on the wall and realized that her marriage was not going to work out, so she needed an exit strategy, and she went back to school with four young kids, and one of the four. She became a teacher, and she was a staff developer, and she became an assistant principal, and then she was a principal for 20, 25 years. My oldest sister, Amanda, was the first special needs student, she's in a wheelchair, to go mainstream in our local high school in the DC area in Montgomery County. So I share that because education in many ways is the currency of my family. On the family text message, my mom to this day will correct grammar, but we, I say that because we believe in the work that you're doing. And, you know, we heard tonight around how do we get the funds that we need and the calendar and all the operational things. I just want to say thank you all before I jump in for all of your work as the board and administration, teachers. Thank you so much. We believe in what you do. Couple things I wanted to share. I think as we think about this, the scholars studio, this is from Adam Grant, who says that evidence shows that the wellspring of intrinsic motivation is having the freedom and the opportunity to explore our interests. So this is, as we think about this body of work, this idea that if students have the opportunity to explore something that's interesting, where can they go? And that that's sort of an engine that we want to light. So as we think about a lot of the communications work that we've been doing, it's this idea that has been driving us. A quick snapshot about our firm, we do a lot of work in workforce development and education, and our approach isn't just to repackage what it is, but to come in together, tag team and partner and say, what great work is already being done? How can we amplify the experience? How can we bring it to life? How can we even understand operationally how our material is created? And how can we give templates and resources and all those sorts of things to continue to fuel the good work that's happening? The goal of this project really is to put students at the center. And so as we think about this work of communications, engagement, if I were to choose one word, it would be engagement. So we know what COVID did, you know, studies show that, you all know this, but as students get older, they start to become less engaged, and so we want to say, okay, and this was before we showed up, but how can we actually create an experience that's more engaging, that's more intrinsically interesting? We want to drive awareness for the scholar studios, we want to drive enrollment numbers, and we heard a lot about that, but those are the, those are the goals for this body of work. The way that we do that is put the student at the center. So if you think about the journey of a student from, they know nothing about this, and I'll share in a moment about some of the focus groups that we did, that we heard from students. Some of them don't know very much, others are pretty engaged, but we want to think through, how do we create awareness? How do we help students consider things and spark interest and get them interested? And then how do we then drive enrollment and say, hey, we actually think you'd be a great fit, you should consider signing up and selecting in to one of these studios? A snapshot of our process, and we'll actually walk you through a little bit of the work that we did, was really about gaining community input and making sure that we were getting a lot of voices into the conversation. The team at ACBS gave us a lot of data that we sorted through, a lot of survey work. We visited, I'm just going through some of the key activities. We visited classrooms with students, varying their involvement in a CLC, we studio activity, we went to Trey's class and Mr. Dove's class, and we had a lot of conversations with stakeholders here, with teachers, administrators, superintendent, internal and external project contacts like Karen Waters Wick around naming and what's she doing, and really trying to make sure that we're collaborating and getting as many points of view as we could. We visited all the comprehensive high schools, we walked the hallways, we really got a sense of the room, we had conversations with students, and then just the background review of a lot of the documents. And then just the background review of a lot of the documents with data and cluster data and really trying to say, okay, how can we make sure that we have all of this baked into the work as we go? And I think, I know that you all know this, but we want to make sure that we're representing students from all backgrounds, all walks of life, and thinking through how can a communication strategy complement the good work that's already being done in the classroom to make sure that we're casting a broad net that can be attractional for all kinds of students. I wanted to talk through just, these are the things that we heard. So I'm going to talk through some motivators and some barriers. And then Casey will come up and walk through, just to give you a kind of a sneak peek of the studios themselves. So on the motivator side, a lot of these conversations, we just heard an interest and a passion for the subject matter. Students really find that thing that sparks them and that's the thing that draws them into these studios. Secondly is just the practical, the hands-on experience, that's almost the how of the learning, whether it's in a lab environment or you're doing an interesting activity or you're actually going out on a field trip. It's that experiential, hands-on, and even that a lot of the things that they're learning aren't abstract. It's like this is the authentic experience of if I were to be doing this in the real world in a medical environment, this is actually what it would be like. So I think that practical, hands-on experience. Thirdly, just the community and the cohort-based learning that there really is, to use a technical term, a vibe in some of these places, that when you go to these classrooms, there's a sense of, these are my people, these people are interested in the same thing that I'm interested in and the instructor is interested as well, that there's just this real sense of community in each of these studios. Fourthly, just the influence of peers and family is a big motivator for students to opt in, whether it's an older sibling went through something similar and it's sort of a CLC or a Mesa-like model, or knowing that one of your peers is considering it or is in it, that there's this influence of peers and family that motivates students. And then lastly, just unique opportunities and resources that in some cases, if you're in one of these studios, you might get access to or get to experience something that you might not otherwise. And then lastly, and then I'll bring Casey up, just some of the barriers. A lot of these things that we heard were a bit more operational. So I think one was just the social and academic separation, particularly if you're going to a new building or a new community, just the sense of, is the benefit of the community that might be there? Is there a trade-off for my friends that are at my base school or the community that I know? So I think that's a real thing. Secondly, just the logistical and the scheduling challenges around things like transportation and sports. That was something that we heard. Thirdly, just the academic rigor in the workload. And this one cuts both ways because it depends on the student you're talking to. Some, some students wonder if there's too much rigor and others, because some things have shifted, wonder if there's enough rigor. So I think we kind of heard both sides of that, depending on which student you're talking to. Fourthly, just an uncertainty and lack of information. So this is back in the spring. I think a lot of students just said, I've kind of heard about that. If, A, if I know about it, do I really know what all, what that really is? So really wanted to think through, how can we create more clarity, provide more information about what this offering actually is? And then lastly, just flexibility, concerns around commitment. Is it, am I, is the course still going to be too much? Do I have what it takes? So that's just a snapshot of some of the motivators and the barriers. Casey is going to walk through, give you a snapshot of the latest related to the studios.
Hi, good evening. So as Blaine said, we spent a lot of time on campus touring, talking to people, really understanding what students, teachers, really what the community was saying. And so part of that process came to this juxtaposition of even calling this Scholar Studios. So scholars, people wanted something that represented the academic rigor of what is happening, but also studios. So that term was chosen specifically because studios represents a place where you can actually invent, experiment. You can get to know a little bit more about something. But also studios because it's a physical place. As you've seen from the data, Center One, it looks different than all of the other studios or prior CLCs because there is a sense of place and community. So we want to set the success up of that as you even think about Center Two and kind of rolling all of that strategy together is why we landed on studios. And you'll see in this deck, but even the idea of physically branding each place in the school where that studio takes place. So you walk across, across the threshold and you see a sign or a banner. The classrooms organized or laid out a little bit differently. It feels different. It feels like you're physically in a place with your people in a sense. And that's something that this program can now embody moving forward. Great, so information you all know, but clearly this has moved to a four-year program, starting in ninth grade now. And each focus area is flexible, as I just said. This is really a reflection of what students had to say and just the general programs and thinking about the logistics, obviously getting back and forth. And all those things are really important, but one of the biggest things that we wanted to accomplish with this project is talking about the motivators. And I'll get into that a little bit around the background of things that we heard. So focus, what do people really get from this? When they're in these physical places and spaces, they can actually deep dive into an interest. And we heard a lot of feedback, actually, that using the word career was, could be intimidating for people and could feel like, am I locking in as an eighth grader of choosing my career? And that was a little bit of a hurtful people to get over and it was even deterring them somewhat. So how can we say, yes, you're going to be focused, yes, you can learn something more that you're passionate about, but it does not mean you're a lockstep now in a career path? So that's just a distinction in the vernacular that we definitely want to make through this, making it more welcoming and more experimental. And then community, I think we've touched on this. And then experiences that you get out from behind your desk. You can touch and feel, you can see things in the community. You spend time in the various workplaces, really seeing what it might be like. Those are the three things that really rose to the surface from what we saw and what students and teachers were telling us. So, all right, where does that land? You all have already seen these names, but I just want to run through them. We went through this, do we name it something literal? Do we name it an idea of what it is? And we landed here, Blueprint, Encore, Impact Link, Nexus, Pulse, Saver, Solve, Terra, Thrive, Venture, Vivid. I'm sure you all will become, we'll excuse that. I'm sure you all will become more acquainted with these names over time, but it's really encouraging to see they're already laced through this whole presentation. They're being adopted, they're being incorporated. And that's intentional. So we want to make sure these names, even if the qualifiers and modifiers in the area of study slightly changes or tweaks, those names can stand the test of time and they can really embody the energy of what someone gets by experiencing these studios. So just to give you a little more background there. And then clearly the qualifier, people will want to be able to say, what are the nuts and bolts in these programs? And we want to make sure in all the branding there is that lockup so people can see the primary name and the secondary name in all instances. And then outcomes, obviously, what are people really looking for when we talk about results? Why they are going to do this program and what does it really get them? Their personal growth, obviously being able to explore skills that they don't have another environment to explore at the moment. College prep, clearly still on the table and very important to a lot of people. And then career readiness. How do we fill in-demand jobs? And how is Albemarle County really at the nexus of doing that and solving that problem and becoming honestly a prototype for how to do this statewide? How do we look at these studios, not as an add-on, but as a core to the curriculum to really change students' lives? And that's really what we've felt through even working on this project. You all are at the precipice of something that has been happening for quite some time, but you're really coming into a new phase of it and this, and this is a catalyst for really making that happen. Great, so these are all the logos and the beautiful kind of emblems that we came up with in collaboration with all the feedback we heard. So when I talk about extending how these look and feel, they're meant to be not extremely exact. You can tell they're supposed to show excitement, kind of nod to something that might be related to that name. But you'll see examples of how these play out. I'll jump to that in a second. But what have we been doing? What are we doing right now? And kind of what is the greater team working on from a communications perspective? So the communications team, we want to build their capacity. That's what we've been charged to do, not only with the work we're doing right now, but setting them up for success in the future. So we're doing things like creating a lot of templates and what our work is, equipping teachers to be able to use those tools and templates. So we're not just making something and we're the keeper of the keys. We're really here to make sure this work goes on after us and everyone can use these resources and they become their own, both students and teachers and staff. And so also one of the things that we are working on as part of that project is an AI assist tool. We're taking all the research that we did, we're combining it into a closed model. So you can ask, hey, based on the findings of this project, how would you write this in the messaging of Thrive Studio? And what are the things that students who gave us feedback in that specific studio might be interested in if we added this component or took this component away? So those are models that can be continued to be updated by students, staff, us, other, other partners in the future. But definitely something we wanted to bring to this program. So when we leave, it's kind of a built-in, think of it as a companion consultant that lives on after this work, but will have all of the data and information going forward. And then engaging students, you saw ambassadors have already been excited to launch and help with this initiative. This is really on the students. Students are going to motivate other students. Students are going to tell other students, this is a cool program, this is an interesting program, you should sign up. And parents are huge advocates too, but obviously people are really influenced by their peers. So we wanted to make this fun, interactive and look inviting. And then we're working right now on a digital experience, so it's really clear what the options are. We're devising a, kind of a lighter quiz with fun, interactive parts that might show you, hey, you have this interest, think of teasing it out in this way. Think of things you could potentially do, you might want to try this studio. So it's not formulaic in the way that a lot of other personality or career path tests may be. It's just kind of something to get their interest up and encourage them to explore that. So that is what they'll be able to take and kind of refer them to one of the studios to learn more. And I'm sure you all will be seeing that coming in the near future. And then this is what you have in front of you. So what I just mentioned, all of these studios, the gateway that will really be the quiz if students are interested but kind of unsure of what some of these mean or how that aligns with things they're already interested in or just maybe didn't even realize before that were available here. So that QR code you'll see there, that will go to the quiz, which will allow them to explore more, as I mentioned about these studios. And I don't, I don't believe we touched on this earlier, but we also worked with the team on Design Your Future. And we really like that as a banner slogan that can be used across the board for studios. Not necessarily for the fact that it's future just relates to education, but design your future your full future. So that's really the intention behind that. And we would love to see that played out across how this is marketed, talked about internally. It's not just equipping you anymore for career, it's equipping you for your full future as a whole person. And then you all have this one as well. We've set these up as templates, as I mentioned. So this is one example, but these can continue to be edited internally, added to as courses change or updated. And then here's some merch, swag. We love to see things come to life. So here are some stickers. When I was talking about putting things up in the hallways, you've entered the future studio. You can actually wear things with pride that have to do with your specific area that you're interested in. So this is something we're working on the team with right now, but we're excited to kind of see these things come to life in the hallways. And some of our teachers have already embraced this over here. So that's really great to see. Thank you so much for your time and your partnership on this great work.
Thank you, Blaine and Kasey. So that is the end of the first section, which was around high school redesign and update on the studios. And I think we have time for a little bit of questions from that particular section before we move into rotations around industry credentials and work-based learning. We do have a full team here to answer questions. If you have questions for the students or the teachers, myself or Katina, we're all available.
I have a couple of questions. I'm interested in what the, how many students who take the Gateway course continue on into the studios?
And that's a good question. I don't know that off the top of my head, but I would say that it's the majority. Do you know, Katina?
I don't know, our most recent data, actually, you may be able to speak to yours. But typically in the past, we've had like two or three students that-
Can we use the mic please, so we can, thank you.
I can only speak to the past because we haven't followed what the numbers look like. Although we have pulled some numbers based on, we had our current teachers for last year's Gateway speak to who's still in there. I would just have to figure out which spreadsheet I have that data on, but I could pull that for you. But in the past, we've had about two to three students that would annually remove themselves from the class or from the programming after their first year.
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing the company continue on, on the success rate of that. I'm also, something I've been, sorry. Something I've been hearing is, what are you, what sort of communication are you doing with the school counselors in the middle school level to encourage or educate students about this? I have heard some feedback from counselors that they don't have a lot of information on it and so they're frustrated because they feel like they have to, I don't want to say sell, but like, you know, encourage students to do that, but they don't really know as much about it as they probably should.
Yes, as we expanded the program this year to be available to eighth-grade families, that was something we knew would be really important. And our middle school counselors, when we met, I meet with them monthly. And so when I met with them in September, we shared a little bit of the updates and then asked them for any questions they had. They gave us a whole list of questions and we've been working on answering those. In addition to that, we met with them again today. We're meeting with all six through 12 counselors monthly, so I think that's going to help. We also have two middle school counselors on our steering team who are really giving us some good advice on what to do for both communications and registration. In addition to that, we're planning our, our first annual Career Development Day on November 4th, which will be all sixth through 12th grade counselors. We're inviting our teachers and our students from each studio to come share with the counselors. And one of the things we're hoping to do during that time is help the counselors put kind of like a face to the name of the studios so they can start to sit, kind of trust, if I have a question about Solve Studio, I know I can reach out to Trey Barlow and his students. They'll answer my question, they'll help me understand more about it. So we're really trying to help make those connections so that they feel like they have the information they need. And of course, we're going to be building out resources. You saw samples there for one of the Terra Pathway studios, but there'll be a whole plethora of all of the different studios with all the pathways so they can both have the resources for themselves and their kind of turnkey to be able to share with families. But that will be important.
That's great, yeah. And then my final question has to do with the transportation. I was a little confused on the slide about transportation. So around what time are the students going to be getting back, let's say to Western, if they're in a studio? Can you remind me again what time around when they would be returning?
So currently with the satellites, some of them are getting back to their schools at five. So here's how that works too, though. They've actually, when they pick our students up at a comprehensive high school, because they were there as a remote student that day, they get on a bus that's going, that's headed to Western. When they cross into the Western feeder pattern, they actually start doing routes. And so that's why it takes that a little bit longer. It's not just a straight drive from Albemarle to Western or Western to Monticello. They actually start a route as they move into that new school area. So that's what extends that a little bit, but that's the way they were able to make it work to get students back and forth to sites. So as Center Two opens, that'll kind of do some sort of resolve for that because we'll, we'll do the altered schedule like we're doing at Community Lab in Center One, but that's really kind of how that looks right now. That's why you saw on that particular slide, the late return to some of our school sites.
Yeah, I definitely think that that's a big factor, especially for the Western kids. It's a long way to get back. And, you know, returning at five when your teammates have been practicing for an hour really puts you at a disadvantage. And I would imagine, like you said, that a lot of kids are picking sports because they can still get their high school education at their base school and participate in sports. And so, yeah, I would imagine that that's a pretty big deterrent, unfortunately. So, okay, that was what I was curious about. All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
You shared some information on a slide about the leadership of those, of each of the academies. Are those your typical 10-month teacher positions? Are they, because you, you shared a long list of those additional requirements and I'm just curious.
Yes, and our teacher leaders feel that long list. It is a 10-month responsibility like a typical classroom teacher and they're teaching a full class load. So it is a lot and they are superheroes in all the things that they're doing. But as we look at other models and we look at some of the prior models that we've used, we've often given teacher leaders in similar roles more time for planning and leadership. And so that's something that we're looking into the feasibility of as well.
Okay, so there's nothing- Okay, so there's nothing right now. Are they stipended anyway?
They are stipended, yes. But, but they would say that the time is important.
Absolutely, no. There is a long list of responsibilities and after-hour times for those teachers.
I just wanted to, just as a parent of a ninth grader, second what Ms. Billman said, because when we had our eighth grade to ninth grade transition, we didn't, I didn't hear any of these words at all. So, and I'm also wondering about, like, for my ninth grade kiddo, are people able to get into things in 10th grade, you know, plan for that in the future? And then also again, yes, please talk to the counselors.
Yes, so the middle school counselors this year will be the first year that it's open to ninth graders. So that's probably why I hasn't shared in the past couple of years. But they know that it's important for them to have that information. We will be at the middle school transition nights and the high school curriculum showcases to be available for those. And we're hoping by providing all the resources to the counselors that they'll be sharing it regularly with the families and in their in-class sessions with the students. I think you had a second question, though.
No, just talk to the counselors.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Is there a graphic or something somewhere that shows which studios are going to be at? Where are they going to be? Or do you know that yet or are you deciding?
We're in that conversation currently. What we would also like to do is plan that out for the next two years. We also want to communicate with families which studios will be moving to Center Two because we want them to know that before they start that gateway and then do another transition. So we're really having that conversation now. But there will be information about that on the website and also in the communications that we put out to students and the counselors.
Have we identified each, each studio's leader yet? I know we have some.
We have identified leaders for eight of our 11. And one of the things that you can see is those are represented in our data. If we have a studio leader, we have enrollment in those studios. And so for some of the studios that have not had a leader step up yet or we haven't been able to put someone in that position, we don't have the same enrollment. So I do think that also shows the impact of having a leader for each studio.
Is there any way we could get that list?
Yes, we do have that.
And then going back to what Ms. Billman was talking about, and I know you guys well know this, but at least, I mean, I don't know if this is something we won't even put out there that much, but one of my constituents, Almaral student, ended up in Pulse and ultimately decided to go to Monticello like it was HMSA still. Is that, is that an option?
So let me speak to that because I think too, the data that we shared tonight shows students that are going in an AB schedule. And we also met with Dr. Jesse Turner. And he's actually going to pull data to show us any student that did make that request at the county. So all of our students have the ability to make a request to move from one school to another as a full-time student. There's a lot of factors that go into making that decision, but he does get those requests. And he can approve them if there is capacity at that building to do that. So Monticello is a school that could allow for that for capacity. And he did say that that's where he has his highest request. That is one example of a student that moved from Albemarle to Monticello as a full-time student. But he also highlighted that we have a lot of those requests coming from students in our JROTC program that are moving from Western or Albemarle as a full-time student to Monticello. And unless there's a reason not to approve that, he typically approves those. So he did say he was going to pull that data for us so that we'd know exactly how many students were moving from one school to another as a full-time student.
Okay, for clarification, are the ambassadors of students that's going to represent each studio, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So how many of them have been chosen or have any yet been chosen?
So our teacher leaders shared that opportunity with their students. And there's usually three to five for each of the studios. I think some of our, like Pulse Studio had a lot of excitement, so they might have more.
Okay, thanks.
Is there a CTE advisory board?
Yes, and so we are going to be pulling in advisory. We planned it for the day that we had flooding. So now we have rescheduled it for November, November 12th, would be our first one.
Does that board report to the school board? Or is there a school board representative on that board?
There hasn't traditionally been, but I know we do have new guidelines. And so I'll be working with Craig Tomer and Dr. Hayes to make sure that I follow those.
I think that might be important to have a school board representative on that committee.
Thank you.
So will all these studios, will this work for English language learners? Or are there any that are going to be not successful because of the language barriers?
No, so the, there's no barriers to enrollment for any of our students.
So if they need some language help, they can access it while in the studio?
Yes, and we're working with Lauren McLean and also with Ruth Tapscott for our students with disabilities to make sure that these are inclusive. That was actually something one of our middle school counselors just said to me last week. Listen, if I'm talking to every student and I'm telling every parent that their student is welcome, let's make sure that they are welcomed and supported. Okay, at this time, we will break into two rotations. Here in this room, we will stay for work-based learning. And across the hall, we will get started with industry credentials.
Oh, whichever. It's the same information, it's just in different times.
It's whether or not you want to be on camera while it's straightening or not.
Thank you, that was the right, that was the right.
That's why Judy and Ellen.
What time are we doing the switch?
I brought materials for y'all.
Here comes Kenny, I did break it.
Kenny, did we break something?
And now I'm going to chew into this.
I heard that you guys didn't want me standing delivering, so I brought packets for everybody.
Just kidding, I'm going to put one next to my mouth too.
All right. That's real close.
I have to say really about the names.
Oh, aren't they great?
Except I had to have the legend to be able to remember which was which.
Well, you know, it's interesting about this.
Saber, Soul, and I want to see if I can remember that one.
Yeah.
Supposed to be in Center Two.
Venture.
Venture.
Yeah, well, I just want to give a shout out to your board reps, your student board reps, because I sent that to them, what, like two days after you'd been sworn in or whatever? And I was like, can you guys like get these names out to the students? And they actually gave a lot of good feedback, so just so you know. So I'm going to talk with you guys about work-based learning. And I went ahead and put the slides that were shared into just kind of a note sheet for you. And I originally was going to be joined by Katie Bledsoe, who is the work-based learning specialist at Monticello, but she is ill. And I'm remiss if I don't say how all of this work depends on their work. Each of the comprehensive high schools has a work-based learning specialist. And Katie Bledsoe is the most senior one. So we have a brand-new team. She is also joined by Tim Hamlet at Almaral High School, who started his job as a work-based learning specialist last year, and Erin Rittenhouse, who is the newest member of our team at Western Albemarle. And we can come up with as many visions as possible, but they really are the ones that are on the ground, making work-based learning happen in your schools. So I'm very.
So what happens with lab school?
Lab school, I help them personally, because they don't have one. Yeah, so, and as you maybe know, my, my office is actually at Center One. And so I go over to Center One if they need my help as well. So I wanted to kind of start with what work-based learning is. I think we all intuitively know that our career experiences really do have an impact on us long-term, right? We all kind of, maybe Margaret doesn't, we remember our first job and what it taught us about not just being in the workforce, but just about being an adult and how to like compose yourself and what maybe not to do sometimes. But in fact, there's a lot of research and there's a lot of really good information about that work-based learning is more than just like intrinsically important. It actually does create long-term outcomes, positive outcomes for people who participate in it. A recent study from 2020, and I think they've updated it and I've included the executive summary from the Brookings Institute, shows that work-based learning actually closes long-term equity gaps. So reduces poverty levels in populations because it gets them started early. The mentorship early, connecting to networks early. And those things create long-term success. Dr. Carlock also presented with you last, last time about some of the data around how participation in work-based learning is really for all people, not just those who are going to go straight into the workforce. And in fact, those who participate in work-based learning in high school actually have greater levels of enrollment in secondary education, post-secondary education. So I, I say all of this to say, the why, I think, is really important as to why we are investing in this. And it's not just us who's investing in it. Our college networks and our businesses are also investing in it too. Yesterday, I went to the Virginia Chamber of Commerce Education and Workforce Conference. And that was a lot of what they talked about, right? Work-based learning, getting kids early. At the collegiate level, they are investing hardcore in making sure that there's paid internship opportunities for Virginia students. So this is something that we have believed in in Albemarle County for a long time. And we have included work-based learning in our career development touchpoints for a long time. And it's just getting more and more important, and in my mind. And when we talk about work-based learning, what we're talking about isn't just internships. And I think that a lot of times, there's a lot of kind of misconceptions that that is the only way to work-based learning. But in fact, in the state of Virginia, there is a continuum of 12 different types of work-based learning that range all the way from job shadowing, which can be an hour, a couple of hours a day, all the way up to very intensive apprenticeship. And so when we're thinking about work-based learning for our students in Albemarle County, we want to provide them with a variety of those touchpoints. So when we look at it from the state definition of high-quality work-based learning, it is aligned to learning that they're doing in their coursework. It is with the partnership of a workplace mentor, so somebody who is in the field. And it is organized around and supported on both sides, right? So we always think of it as a triangle, right? So it's not just, not just a student with their outside mentor, it's their student with their outside mentor and their teacher or mentor helping to make those connections for them. So when Y first started in 2022 in this role, we had kind of experienced a decimation of work-based learning brought on by COVID, right? We had pretty strong work-based learning going in before COVID. And kids weren't coming to school, they also weren't going into the workforce. And even when we came back in 2021, a lot of businesses were reluctant to restart in-person or they had moved their workforce to not being in-person. And so there had to be a place of rebuilding. And so it gave us not only a challenge, but an opportunity to really build back a stronger system for work-based learning. And so we thought about it in this way. If we build a robust catalog of experiences, ones that hit all the different levels and are available to all sorts of students depending on their interests, and we can accurately and efficiently collect the information as to who is participating, then we're going to be able to ensure that we are providing high-quality work-based learning for all students. And I think both of those things matter. And if you look at the data pieces, so if you're looking at this first chart, this is the work-based learning requirements met by graduating cohorts. And Dr. Berlin, I made a big copy too. I too didn't bring my reading glasses, so. It's on the backside somewhere. Yeah. So what this, what this says is this is how we report it to the state. A student can complete their CCCRI, College Career and Civic Readiness Indicator, through work-based learning. And so hand-putting in, make sure, make sure that every student who has completed work-based learning gets their credit.
That's required in all degrees, right? For graduation? Everyone has to have.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And so work-based learning is one way in which they can do it. Yeah, and so when we were looking at this, this is the number of students per graduating cohort who is completing work-based learning. I took out, this doesn't include those that don't count for that graduation requirement. Things like job shadowing or short-term mentorship do not count towards that, that graduation requirement. Very valuable experiences for kids to have. But if all we're doing is collecting for graduation requirements, we're not capturing those experiences.
200 out of how many?
200 out of the graduating class of about a thousand. This also doesn't include our service learning numbers. These are kids who have experienced a externship, an internship. They've completed a clinical study. These are pure work-based learning, because a lot of the thought is, what about service learning? Because you'll see in a minute, the numbers of service learning went through the roof as well.
What counts as an experience? Semester, how many hours? I mean, how, how is this measured?
It is measured based on, it depends on the type. Does that make sense? So if it's a school-based enterprise, the duration is the course. So a school-based enterprise is, we don't have to think of a school store, right? And that is for the duration of the course, they're participating in that. If it is an externship, it is a minimum of 40 hours.
Over a semester.
Over a year, over a year. If it is considered an internship, it can range up to 280 hours over the course of the year. And a lot of it is about the, what they accomplish and the type of work-based learning they're doing. A mentorship is the same way. Mentorship doesn't necessarily have to be in-person, whereas a work-based learning most likely does, like an internship does.
These are requirements, but do they also get credit? Is it just?
They do, they do get credit, right. Those are good questions, all right. So in looking at what we were able to, so going from there, we set some kind of baseline goals to start building stronger. We said, we need to get organized. We need to figure out what's happening, right? We need to figure out what, what paperwork is being done. What, where are, where is work-based learning already happening? What systems do we already have in place? And so we did a lot of work around that and streamlining our systems, making sure that all of our forms were accessible for people and teachers who needed to use them. We decided first to pour into places that we already knew we were being successful. For example, our clinical experiences that were happening with the CNA program. Pulse Studio was engaged with Discover Medicine. These were things we're already doing. And we were also learning from those, like what was working? How are they convincing our partners to engage? And then we wanted to make sure that we were standing in some good foundations. And one of the foundations we wanted to set was how are we growing our own internal internship and work-based learning so that kids were not only experiencing what it would be like to work in an education system? You don't just have to be a teacher. There's a lot of people who work in education. And also how we can build those systems as models to then when we go to the community, say, yeah, we can, you can do this. Here are some of the things that we do to make our systems successful. So we experienced some success. So in the 2022, 23 cohort, we saw work-based learning increase. We saw our largest increase in service learning, and that was due to making sure we were capturing the high-quality service learning that our seniors at Monticello were doing as part of their community. the high-quality service learning that our seniors at Monticello were doing as part of their community action projects. That was a from two percent to forty-two percent in terms of service learning. And then from 2022 to 2023, we did a better job of really identifying what type of work-based learning kids were doing, and we were increasing work-based learning as well. And so we saw a lot less job shadowing because what kids were actually doing in those experiences wasn't job shadowing. It was externship. They had duties, they had roles, they had responsibilities. So they weren't just following around a professional, they were engaging. And so we were making sure that we were capturing that as an externship and not just a job shadow. We also spread and implemented Capstone, the CAP projects at Alamo. And so it increased the number of students who were completing service learning as well. So that, so we were able to do that. We still have a ways to go. But overall, we were pretty proud of those numbers. And I think the thing that we are most excited about is not just that we were increasing the number of people participating, but we were increasing the number of people who were completing it earlier. So a lot of times, you know, if it's a graduation requirement, we don't want to get to the end of their graduation requirement, and then all of a sudden, they haven't completed a work-based learning experience and they're scrambling for graduation. We want them to participate in work-based learning early, often, in a lot of meaningful ways. And so if we're looking at the cohorts that have come, we have increased service learning, yes. But in the 2025 cohort, before their service learning projects, we've already seen an increase of students who have already completed their work-based learning experience, and that is continuing to trend.
When do they start? I mean, my dim recollection, we were looking at juniors and seniors.
Yeah.
Is that what we're looking at?
Interestingly enough, we do have kids in the studios who are in those gateway courses who are already participating in work-based learning, so in their ninth grade or 10th grade year.
Margaret, have you done any of this?
I've done a program through K-Tech, it was the EMT program, which is also.
Yeah, so early, often, and in a cyclical process, but yeah. So part of the studio process is figuring out how do we increase those number of opportunities and touchpoints. So in the slide deck, and we're going to run out of time, but there are a couple of really good examples of how this has happened. Number one, wrapping around those CAP projects and connecting them to local government. We've instituted the Ninth Grade Pathway Day, which is the first guaranteed field experience of the high school implementation. And that just happened last week for this year. But in that experience, students go and do industry tours of all sorts of local businesses. Thirty different groups, going to thirty different places, learning about the career options that are available within our own community. It's a really exciting event. And the thing that I was reading through feedback from students and the thing that I wrote down that was most meaningful for me was a student said, I learned about careers I didn't know existed. And I think that that is one of the most amazing things to hear about Pathway Day, is that a lot of times, students, even if they're going to like the firehouse, they've maybe realized that, oh, the fire department has a PR firm, right? Like they have, you don't have to fight fires to work for the fire department, right? We built an interpreters and training program, which is for our students who are fluent in multiple languages to support their communities and earn work-based learning and get training around how to be a professional interpreter. And we still have a lot of ways to go. And so I want to just kind of end in our last few minutes looking at, and it's the, it should be the very last sheet in your packet, which is kind of this one where we're looking at how, what are we thinking about moving forward? And our goal still remains that by the time a student graduates, that they have completed work-based learning and in all, and that there is some type of guaranteed awareness exploration or preparation experience for all students K through 12. And so we've embedded those into our field experiences. We are continuously trying to think about how we can host and expand guest speaker series to promote career awareness. I'm very excited. I'm hoping I will come back in the spring to tell you about a really successful pilot with UVA's Facility Management in our sixth grade class. But then also, it really takes a lot of a lot of pieces, right? So developing partnerships that really support the work-based learning, and that takes time. And I feel like we've got some really good partners right now, and we're expanding them always. And then also supporting the CTE and studio teachers as they embed work-based learning. We want it to be embedded into their coursework, and so that it's not just by chance, it's by design that students are participating in work-based learning. And then I add this last one. In addition to all of that, our work-based learning specialists are supporting students finding careers and getting gainful and meaningful employment, which is outside the scope of work-based learning. It is literally helping them get to their future goal. So that's in a nutshell what I wanted to share. And I wanted to give a little bit of time, a minute, Greg, for questions.
Well, go come here. I mean, they might grant you more time.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, I'm more than happy to have a dialogue.
She is definitely excited.
Yay, great.
What kind of questions do partners ask, or what kind of concerns do they have?
You know what, here's the thing. I have never talked with a partner or a businessperson who didn't want to participate in some way. It's matching, it's matching them with the right participation that fits both their needs and what they can contribute and what we need, right? So not every firm can host an intern or an externship or things like that. But some can host a tour or a field experience. A lot of our tech firms who moved online and moved to virtual offices, they used to do tours of their buildings and they can't, they don't have people working there anymore, right? And so a lot of times, what we we've found is that they'll be willing to do virtual internships or virtual mentorships or come in as guest speakers. They can come to our campuses. So a lot of times, it's not, it's how can I participate? You know, and it's a lot of having those conversations. That's what they're normally asking. How can I? And not necessarily, should I?
What are the businesses or industries that you are still trying to fill in the area?
We have representation in all of our cluster areas. Part of the Studio Ambassador's Day and their meeting is that they meet with their industry advisors as well, and there's representations across the board. I think what I would love to see moving forward is representations across the continuum within those. Those, you know, making sure that there's representation both within higher education, training, and, you know, the trades to the CEO within those spaces so that there's a lot more distribution along those lines.
What, like, we think about budgeting, what do we need to do to make sure this is successful?
Do you have more time in the day? No, I think it's, I think it's a diligent effort, right? So it's the continuous support of like starting small, building strong in each of these things, right? The guaranteed fear experiences are wonderful. Like tomorrow morning, I'm going with a bunch of health and PE teachers to tour and prep for a field experience for second graders around health careers. So those types of things, they take time, they take effort, and it's the continuously making sure that we are keeping it in the forefront. Yeah. So keep doing what you're doing, support it, right? You guys do support it.
I then think about, and this is off the top of my head, but I did then think about like, do you, in a way, I mean, by doing this, this is a huge outreach. It like, this is a community outreach effort, I mean.
Sure.
Right? I mean, that's a piece of what this is. And I just continue to keep thinking about how do we help everyone in the community understand the important, like, the important role our schools have in everyone's life and that they, like, because we are educating future employees from there, it is in their best interest to have a strong school and like, yeah.
There's definitely something there because there's no, like I said, there's no person that I've ever talked to in the business community that doesn't know that we're preparing their future workforce.
Right, exactly.
And so I do think that there is something there.
Yeah, there's something there.
Mm-hmm. And they want to know. They want to know, how can they help do that?
I mean, this dovetails, I'm sure not. Love, you know, beautifully with the studios.
Oh, yeah.
If you're taking your second graders out to look at these various sites, this works very well.
Yeah. We're excited about that one.
Is a student left on the school board, a work-based experience?
It is. It is, yes, it is. I don't know, you might have more than, more than eight, so.
Are there any ways where, like, the New Commerce Academy is connected to this?
Yes. So Lauren McLean is the one who started the interpreters and training program.
Okay.
And so what the interpreters, we started that, that was the first one we really, we really stood up. Because she really believed in making sure that students who were multilingual saw that as an asset. Because certainly employers do, right? And so they stood it up, and so as students are, a lot of those interpreters and training, we do the training at the Newcomer Learning Center. And so they interact with those students, but also as students gain English proficiency, then they are recommended for Monticello. Yeah.
Quick question about, I guess, the advertisement of work-based learning. So the specialists that are at each school.
Yeah.
I do have a lot of peers who tell me that they want to get more involved in, I guess, more career readiness, readiness for the future after high school, and I feel like this is an opportunity, but they don't know that it exists.
Yeah.
So I didn't even know that Miss Rittenhouse were a work-based learning specialist after our past work-based learning specialists retired. So I feel like, are there any like actions that you guys are taking to like advertise it more to students and students who want to reach out?
Yes, that's a very good question. Number one, work-based learning specialist, Ms. Rittenhouse, will visit every 10th grade class at some point. They usually go on class visits, usually go with counselors as they're kind of thinking about those six-year plans and they're having those counselor meetings. She gets embedded in that. She also does, it's kind of, anytime there's talking about college, anytime they're talking about course planning, those work-based learning specialists try to be in those meetings. The other thing, particularly for your school, Margaret, is that they moved the career center to right off of the cafeteria, so that it was like right there, so that you could, you could see her. And I know that she's working on trying to make more, more opportunities for kids to know. But I think you're right. I think we could do a better job. A lot of times, and one of the things I found moving into this role, is it's happening, right? Kids are doing work-based learning. How are we making sure that we're capturing it? How are we making sure that we are supporting it on the school side? So that it's not just that they're working part-time, but they also are meeting with a Miss Rittenhouse and getting lessons on how to kind of make that into a career or thinking a little bit better. One of my favorite things that Tim Hamlet has ever said was, I helped my student get a better job. They were working, you know, part-time at a fast food restaurant. I helped him get a job in a, in an auto body shop. You know, like, so it's those types of things.
Good question.
Are we good?
Yeah, we're ready.
All right, thank you. You get to stay here, Margaret. Oh, yeah. Yep, it's your turn.
You still can't take your opportunity.
Thank you, thank you, it was nice. You could take it. Job security.
Oh, you're good. Good evening again, Megan Maynard, and we're going to chat a little bit about industry credential initiatives. So I have a few resources here to refer to, but feel free to stop and ask us any questions that you might have. We do have a student and teacher with us as well, so.
Do you have dates?
Yes. Adam Kester, Alamo High School senior.
Heather Schmidt, cybersecurity teacher.
Allison Swillman.
Rebecca Berlin.
So industry credentials can be exams, they can be licenses, or they can be occupational competency assessments. And they are used for stepping stones, so students can take multiple credentials over time to kind of demonstrate their progress. They also demonstrate competency, they help students to earn their CTE diploma seal, and they can be an alternative to the lab science verified credit for SOLs. Some trends for you to be aware of is that VDOE has kind of signaled to expect some adjustments into the way that we have traditionally done industry standard credentials, to be favoring more towards those industry standard credentials versus occupational competency assessments. And we'll kind of talk about those differences tonight. You should also know that currently, K-Tech is where students are getting most of those credentials. But that our redesigned high school experience with the Scholar Studios has these industry standard credentials embedded into them, and that all CTE teachers who are pursuing initial licensure are required to have an industry credential themselves. You've seen the 3D accreditation framework, and you can kind of see in that center where industry credentials fall for our high schools with regards to accreditation. And when you talk to students, they tell us both that industry credentials are valuable to them to show their competency while they're in high school, but also valuable to them if they further on in a career or in college. One of the things we've heard from students is that it actually gives them kind of a leg ahead when they go into college programs. So if you took CAD in high school as part of your architecture program, and then you get to college, you've already kind of earned that capacity and have, and are able to show your instructor and your peers kind of how far ahead you are with that CAD information. If you earn a licensure like CNA, you can also get paid higher wage jobs. And so whether you are going straight into the workforce or you're going into college, it can actually help you to be more financially viable while you're also having to pay tuition. So you can kind of see how that affects students. I talked about the different types of credentials. And so a lot of our students right now are taking workplace readiness and the Wise Financial Literacy credential. Those are really more occupational competency assessments. They measure competency in the, similar to maybe like an SOL test would measure competency. But they're not nationally recognized credentials in the field. And so, as I mentioned, VDOE is signaling a favoring of more of those credentials in the field as well as licensure. And you can see kind of the percentage of our students and what they are currently taking. And if you flip to the next page, you can see outside of K-Tech, which credentials our students are currently earning. So in the personal finance classes that all of our students are required to take, they take the Wise Financial Literacy exam. And then in all of our first-year CTE classes, they take the Workplace Readiness Credential. So you can see why those numbers are so high. In a few of our Level Two courses, we have implemented industry credentials. So in Sports Medicine, they're taking the National Academy of Sports Medicine Personal Trainer Exam. You can see ROTC takes the ASVAB, our EMT program offers licensure in either EMR or EMT. Game Design just started last year with the Unity Certified User Program. And tonight, we have our cybersecurity teacher from Center One who can talk to you a little bit about the certification she offers, as well as Adam Kester, one of our GIS students, who can talk a little bit about their experience with some GIS certifications. So Miss Smith, if you'd like to share.
Any of our GISs?
Good, well, you'll get to learn all about it. We have a video to showcase it.
Yeah, so I'm Heather Schmidt. I teach cybersecurity over at Center One. And I'm a career switcher. So I started off in information technology. I did that for, I don't want to date myself, but over a decade. And then I switched to teaching technology. So it's relevant because I have worked in industry, I've worked in the field, I've been on the other side of the interview table. So I know what kind of certifications you get excited about when you've got a resume and other ones that have little, a little bit lesser of an exciting point. it's to apply for jobs or whether it's to go into college for additional training. We've had good success. I have some certifications that are attainable just from doing the coursework, and it's an entry-level industry credential, but I've been most proud of the work we've done to get the Comp T Security Plus certification because that's a big deal. That is the entry-level requirement for working with the federal government, and so that is a launching point into a six-figure salary. Lots of opportunities, and so whether they use that to boost their college career and earning potential while they're in school, or whether they just go right into industry, they have options. So we were really excited about, we had seven pass last year, and we had pulled the numbers from what VDOE had had at the time, so that was 22 numbers, and so in that year, 70 students in the Commonwealth had passed, and so that makes that seven look even more outstanding if like about 10% was someone. We do a lot of work in order to get this level of success, so it's not just what's in the classroom. There's some self-study, obviously, but we're also meeting outside of school, we're doing training sessions, and since the A-Day and B-Day, we're having a training session on A-Day and we're having a training session on B-Day. And over pizza and chicken nuggets, the students are working together to all go through the same practice test at the same time, and they're seeing other viewpoints, they're arguing why this couldn't possibly be the right answer. So it's not just going through and clicking, it's an experience, and maybe they didn't catch it the first time when they saw it in class, or read it in the book, or watched the video, or looked at it at home, but they might get it when somebody says, "Well, I always remember it this way." And so it really builds on that cohort experience of we're going to work together and we're going to get this. That's great. Do we, is there a cost for the exams and who then bears that? That's a good question.
There is a big cost for the exams. Most of the exams average about $200 per student. The state does provide reimbursement. I don't have an exact number in front of me, but I want to say it's like $1.50 per student, and we do max out all of those state reimbursement funds. Additionally, we have Perkins grant money from the federal government, which I submit to you guys each year, and a significant portion of that also goes towards our industry credentials. We max that amount out and use some of our local funding as well. I've been talking to Dr. Hayes because it's really important that more students get opportunities to earn industry credentials, and so we're working on a budget initiative to designate more funds towards this.
That would be a very good question. Is there any, it sounds like if there's a budget line item to pay for that, so that certificate cost doesn't have to be right in front of family or child?
Yes, so no students are paying for their certification costs, and we don't limit it to certain students. So if you're in a class that offers it, the students who are in that class have an opportunity to take that assessment.
But you're saying, but obviously, as it gets more popular, we want to make sure we have that money.
That's right. That's right. And I think it's really neat to see how hard our students are working towards something that isn't an SOL graduation requirement, right? Because they're motivated, they're engaged, and they know this could help them in their future. So I think it's a great example. I think sometimes we get down on our students, and you guys are engaged when it's something you're passionate and interested in, and so I think this is a perfect example.
At least you can see the value in a certificate beyond the SOLs.
That's right.
Nobody really cares. We do, we do.
No jobs ever ask for approval of Cathy and us.
And I can really help you in the future, you just heard from Amber with work-based learning experiences, but if you have a student who wants to go into healthcare and they have their CNA credential, you can get some work experience, which is usually required to be able to do the next level.
I thought that quote was incredible in here about the young lady who couldn't afford her tuition and used her CNA to like get a job on the weekends to pay her tuition at UVA, that's incredible.
Yeah, and that's one of our Monticello students who got their CNA at K-Tech.
Right.
So we'll share a little bit about our GIS programs, so you can learn more about geospatial information technology.
I think of workforce readiness, I think of relevant and authentic skills that students learn, and finally, I think to myself, is it accessible? And in my GIS classes, it checks all three boxes. Students in the class are given the opportunity to learn GIS as a software tool, they learn how to collect data, analyze data, and visualize that data, they learn how to create really dynamic maps and online apps. And finally, probably the coolest thing is they get to learn how to process drone imagery, which, let's be real, drones are cool these days.
Yeah, I've learned a lot about my area, the place that I live in, and just ways to take the information about the world around me and put it onto a map so that other people can learn about it too. Things was really helpful, the stuff that we can do it that way.
I know there are a lot of careers that use like GIS specifically, like I've met some people who work in the GIS industry, like for the government, for example, and then also like private companies sometimes use it, so I think it's just a useful skill perhaps for a lot of things.
We have one other clip.
In GIS, I've learned to, I'd say for the most part, just solve problems, like fix like a traffic jam because there was an accident, or finding a new location for a hospital.
So I think it's like a good experience to learn how to like, you know, work with computers and like, you kind of see how a lot of times they're really fidgety and you don't know what they're doing.
And in my third year, we took the time to study to take the FAA Remote Pilot License Test, and at the end of my junior year, I passed, and so I'm now certified to be a remote commercial pilot. I feel like I can use these skills already and apply it to the real world.
I would hope that it would be able to give some insight and people could actually visualize the problem, because like sometimes you can hear a problem, but you don't really understand it until you actually see like firsthand the issue.
To give you a little bit of the intro into what the students are doing in our GIS classes with Mr. Bunin, who's a fantastic teacher, well-renowned both locally and nationally and internationally. The ESRI exam that the students take was traditionally a workplace exam that workers took in the field, and they started offering it at the college level, and we, along with just a few other places, are offering it at the high school level. Can you talk a little bit about that experience for yourself?
So I'm Adam Kestner, I'm a senior at Almaro High School. I just finished my third year studying GIS, and I love it, I love working with the computer and just analyzing the space that I live in and solving problems. Flying drones is really fun, too. We spent a lot of time capturing drone photography, drone video. We did a series of field trips around the county, just to, we went to every corner of Almaro County, got a different drone video as a component to one video, really interesting experience to really find out about the place that I live in. Last year, in my class, we piloted taking the FAA Unmanned Remote Pilot Certification and the GIS Fundamentals Foundation of 24 exam. For the FAA exam, we spent about a month and a half to two months just in class, working through a series of videos and quizzes to study what we need to know for the exam, and then we all went to this testing center, we took it. Seventy-five percent of the GIS students passed, we were really happy about that. For the GIS exam, I did not need to study for that one at all because all of the material that was on the exam, we had previously gone over in the class in the years that I've taken it, either in guided tutorials or projects that I've worked on, I feel like when I got to the exam, to the test, I was incredibly prepared for everything I needed to know. Sixty-five percent of us passed that, which is greater than the national average pass rate for the test, and yeah, we were also really happy with those results.
The national average for the test that is being taken by adults in the field.
Yep, yep. And then the, I'm really pleased that I can come out of high school with these industry credentials, because it's one thing to have an A in the class, and it's another thing to have something that says to you that, hey, I know these skills, I have this knowledge, and that I would be a good, I would be good in the workforce.
Yeah, that's awesome. It's a great industry, too. I have two good friends that are government contractors, and they've lived all over the world, and it's very cool. Do you follow Above Virginia on Instagram?
I do.
They're a very cool drone photography group that you've probably been really interested in, they do really cool shots from around here.
How did you like find, like, how did you find out about the classes?
So, long story, I had signed up for a study all my freshman year, got to school, realized I did not need one, and so I went to my counselor, I was taking three different classes and just giving a list of stuff I could do, and Mr. Bunin, he was a good friend of my dad, he rented out a room in his house at college, and my dad was like, "You should take Mr. Bunin's class," so.
Serendipitous, yeah. Very easy answer.
I signed up for it knowing nothing about the course, but it was fantastic, and I ended up taking two more years of it, so I was really happy with that decision.
So awareness is a big area for us in both the studios, but in CTE classes in general, and that's definitely an area focused.
For either one of you, how are our English language learners doing in these classes? And what kind of barriers are there, or what kind of assistance to make?
Do you want to start, and then I'll follow up?
Sure. I don't have a lot that have come in, it is a bit of a challenge because there is a good bit of reading, and I've learned to adjust how much reading we have and kind of pair it with as much hands-on as possible because that really helps it to make sense.
So across the board in CTE classes, we have more English learners than the rest of our classes, and we kind of shared that a little bit in our last work session. And so we're working with our teachers to support students who are English learners, but they don't have necessarily another collab teacher, but we do have strategies that we can use to support our English learners. I've really been talking to Lauren McLean to make sure that we don't have any barriers to accessing any of our programs, and working with the newcomer learning community to see how we can partner with students even when they're first coming to our schools, to make sure that they have the skills to be successful when they then enter into our comprehensive schools as well. So it's definitely an area where we can continue to grow.
Yeah, I mean, my information is old, but you know, someone taking CNA, they could do the coursework, but couldn't get the certification because of English barriers.
That's right. There are some, there are, now the state requires that every industry credential that's approved, that we have information from that company or that licensing board on what accommodations are allowed. So on some of the credentials, students are allowed to have a bilingual dictionary, they're allowed to use audio, similar to our SOL test. So probably in the past like five to seven years, they start requiring that of all of the credentialing agencies so that we know exactly which ones we can and which ones we can't, which is interesting because, you know, our SOLs, we have a clear information from VDOE on how to provide those accommodations, but for each credential, each organization is different. And so, you know, Ms. Schmidt is an expert in cybersecurity, but each of our teachers has to learn the credentials that they offer.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for saying so, Mary. What are you doing this year?
I'm a city architect.
Awesome. That's fantastic.
So I assume my GIS definitely will be these walls.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Well, good luck.
There are two big schools, I think they had Gary Hall.
Actually, I think the GIS students helped do some here, they're working on a project right now at the WIS Center Two.
I just want to thank all the teachers and students again who came and added greatness to this conversation. So we've had about three or four hours of your time over the last month or so, and I hope, and just thinking about kind of key takeaways, right, the depth and the breadth and the richness of the opportunities that we're offering, some of our secondary students and exploring pathways, how it kind of all links together between the arts, CTE, the scholar studios, and work-based and industry credentials. We're going to continue to build out these programs, especially as we open Center Two, and think about how to redesign high school and bring the experiences to the base schools and grow them there equitably as well, and we just wanted to, are there any final thoughts, questions, comments over the last two work sessions?
Just a comment, I think the organization of this and the level of description and the handouts were all quite lovely, pretty informative.
I was very impressed by our teachers and students and our work-based learning coordinator. I find it, I found it very exciting for our students.
I want to echo that, and I just, I know I work every day with almost everybody that presented, but just seeing it all come together, and we, for decades, we've talked about the, in 1892, you know, the Committee of Ten that the National Education Association put together to develop the curriculum that we still use in our schools, English, science, math, social studies, if there's room, maybe some art. And I think that we've talked and talked, and there's been the energy that and commitment that everyone has shown to really changing things for kids is really going to make a difference in their lives. And it's, as we heard earlier, it's so much more than just about academics or career, it's who do they want to be? That's what our current generation of kids thinks about, is who do I want to be? What kind of life am I going to have? And by changing the subject, you know, changing it from English to Studio English, changing the content, the skills that the students are developing, and the excitement that they have when they see the real-world application and who they're going to be is really what's going to change their lives. And so this is life-changing work, it's trajectory-changing work, and we have to keep doing it, we must keep doing it, and we can't give up on it.
Thank you very much. Next, we have school board business or superintendent business. My phone already says sleep. All right, good night.
Hope you didn't want to say anything.
I know.